Good evening, welcome to our March 22nd, 2021 Regular Board of Commissioners Meeting for the Town of Matthews. I'm Mayor John Higdon. I would like to start with a few introductions. Our Town Attorney, Charles Buckley, Town Manager, Hazen Blodgett, Commissioner Ken McCool, Mayor Pro Tem Renee Gardner, Commissioner Jeff Miller, Commissioner Larry Whitley, our Planning Director Jay Camp, Commissioner John Urban, Assistant Town Manager Becky Hawke, our Communications Coordinator Maureen Keith, Police Chief Pennington, Clark Pennington, and our Town Clerk Lori Canapino. I'd like to once again remind everyone, due to the Governor's COVID-19 Orders, this meeting of the Matthews Board of Commissioners will be conducted remotely using the Zoom Virtual Meeting Platform. The Town of Matthews is committed to transparency and robust public participation during these challenging times. As we have done for the last many times, the Mayor and Commissioners will vote on each item by roll call vote, meaning each member will be polled individually to state their vote for the record, and they will also raise their hand or otherwise visually indicate their vote. For those that wish to join me, please join me in a prayer. "Lord, help us to keep the elderly, those in poor health, and the otherwise vulnerable safe as we slowly emerge from this global pandemic. We pray that you will meet each and every one of us where we are and see us through these turbulent times. We ask that you calm the storms around us and heal our land from polarization, racial strife, and sickness. Help each of us learn to listen, really listen, to those with whom we disagree, and to search for areas where we can find solutions to problems with compromise. We ask that you keep those that intercede on our behalf in times of violence and emergency safe as they conduct their duties. And finally, Lord, we ask that you give the town leaders who gather here tonight on this virtual dais the courage and wisdom to make the best decisions for the citizens of Matthews. We pray this in your holy name, amen." Okay, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the pledge. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." I now would like to recognize Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we have Sue Sprott with us, I believe, Lori.
That's great.
We do have a proclamation in recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'd like to read it now. "Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets, and whereas all children deserve to have safe, stable nurturing and healthy homes and communities that foster their well-being, and whereas child abuse and neglect are public responsibilities affecting both the current and future quality of life of a state, and whereas parents need support and resources to cope with stress and nurture their children to grow to their fullest potential, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, therefore I, Mayor John F. Higdon, do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the Town of Matthews, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. In witness whereof, I appear to undertake to set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Matthews to be affixed this 22nd day of March, 2021." So, we will present this to Sue Sprott, and I know that Chief, you are here as well as part of this effort. Would either of you like to say something?
I would. I think we've got a PowerPoint that Jay's gonna share the screen for me, and we'll run through real quick if we might.
That'd be great, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the board. So, just wanted to thank you so much for just giving us the opportunity to share some information tonight about how we at COS Kids are acting as advocates for the needs of all the children in the community, and while we're participating in this particular campaign. Next screen, please, Jay. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month across the entire United States, as well as here in North Carolina, and it's an event that recognizes the importance of communities working together to help families thrive. So, we know it requires resilience for children and adults to overcome tough times, but especially the turmoil and isolation that everyone has felt as a result of COVID. Our goal is just to share some ideas about how we can all be at a connection to make an impact on our community. Jay? Pennwells, like little pinwheel gardens here in front of COS Kids, are sort of a symbol of this campaign, but pennwells are also a symbol of the great childhoods that all children deserve. So, you're gonna see pennwheel gardens like this at 18 different locations in downtown Matthews. During April, our goal is to bring everyone together, from parents to business leaders to elected officials, to recognize the fact that we all have a role to play in the healthy development of families. And did you know that over 80% of the brain growth happens in those first three years of a child's life? What incredible opportunity we have to help shape and develop those little minds. So, sometimes as an adult, even when you do something that seems really small, it's making a lasting impact for that child. So, spending focused time with the child builds healthy brain connections. But in addition, you know, let's all be reminded, positive relationships and new experiences create new brain connections at any age. So, these are connections that boost health and happiness for all of us. These are some of the photographs that you're gonna see in our social media over the next month. These are all taken on our campus, but the idea is just to remind you that one project with a child can help them understand teamwork, effort, achievement, compassion, friendship, and so much more. Do not dismiss the opportunity because you think it's not worth much. The value you are offering a child is priceless. The thing is, it's all connected. Relationships build community. Children who have supportive, healthy attention are less likely to get involved in crime, violence, and substance abuse later in life. Getting involved with a children's program in your neighborhood is one of the best things you can do to uplift the entire community. Everyone needs caring adults in their life. When parents cannot be there, teachers, coaches, neighbors, and mentors can make a difference. Reaching out and showing a child or adult you care can be a life changer, and that's how we make communities strong, one relationship at a time. It's a package deal. Helping teachers helps kids. Helping parents helps kids. We need to reach out to the whole family and meet them where they are. When we connect with a parent or other caregivers, we're helping the children as well. A simple truth is that if we do not support both the caregivers and the children together, someone gets left behind. We want you to know it's so much easier than you think to make an impact on the children in your community. Three ideas that we're offering here is number one, mentor. Mentor a child or a parent in your community. Offer them assistance. Volunteer in an after-school program. When children and parents get the support they need, good things happen. We urge you to advocate. Speak out for those programs in your community that make families a priority. And finally, we would suggest that you would consider making a donation that works for you. Organizations like COS Kids that rely on support from individuals, civic groups, and churches to keep serving children and families, we count on every donation, and every donation matters. And then finally, I would ask all of us to consider, what is your connection? Every day, we have new opportunities to make positive, supportive connections with people around us. Reaching out to family, friends, and community, we can build healthy futures for everyone. Find a way to fill the gap for someone, and both of you will benefit. And I thank you for letting me share that with you tonight.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Chief Pennington, would you care to add anything?
No, I think she did a great job. I mean, April is obviously Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we partner not only with COS Kids but with Pat's Place in dealing with child abuse prevention, education, and investigation. So, we really do value our partnerships with COS Kids and Pat's Place. We appreciate it.
Very good. Well, thank you both, and we appreciate it for being here for that very important cause. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Receive Information from Arts and Science Council. From Arts and Science Council, we have Krista Terrell and Andrea Downs, and from the Matthews Playhouse, June Bayless, Gabby Lats, and Amy Dunn. We'll start with Ms. Terrell.
Good evening, Mayor Higdon and Town Commissioners. My name is Krista Terrell. I am currently the Acting President of the Arts and Science Council. We're Mecklenburg County's local arts agency ensuring access to an excellent, relevant, and sustainable cultural community for all. First, I want to say thank you so much for entrusting ASC to serve the residents of Matthews by investing in arts and cultural organizations and creative individuals through a cultural equity lens. For fiscal year '22, the Arts and Science Council is requesting funding from the Town of Matthews at a level of $35,000, and this evening, we hope to demonstrate to you why you should consider increasing your support to the arts and cultural sector through ASC. Between 2018 and 2021, ASC has invested over $226,000 in Matthews-based creatives and cultural activity through cultural vision grants, town initiative grants, Culture Blocks programming, artist support grants, and operating support to Matthews Playhouse of the Performing Arts. In addition, ASC administered $22,000 to Matthews Playhouse for the CARES Act funding through a partnership with the City of Charlotte, Mecklenburg County, Hugh House, and Charlotte is Creative and Foundation for the Carolinas. Cultural Vision Grants directly respond to the community's interest in programming that builds strong community through programming that is relevant, diverse, and close to where people live, and provides transformational cultural expression. The grants have provided $20,000 in direct support to the Town of Matthews Park, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Department in the last four years, including support for a series of festivals in the town that provides cultural elements and draw large crowds from the community and surrounding areas. One thing that we know for sure is that the arts mean business. In our latest Arts and Economic Prosperity Study, the nonprofit arts and cultural sector here generates about $242 million annually and attracts more than a million people from outside of the county. These experiences, like the festivals that are happening and the programming that's happening in Matthews, are approachable for residents and visitors, contributes to their quality of life, and really helps provide tangible results by driving tourism dollars to the Town of Matthews. Also, this fiscal year, we awarded a $2,000 Cultural Vision Grant to Matthews-based artist Andrea Downs, who you'll hear from tonight, to support airing out the Dirty Laundry, a participatory art project that invites diverse communities of women to share their stories and engage the community in dialogue around equity and justice. ASC's Culture Blocks Program provides various similar experiences that are desires of residents, where we're really listening and learning from residents about the type of cultural experiences they want, and then we respond with those needs. And so, those experiences range from dances of India that happened at Philadelphia Presbyterian Church before the pandemic, and the Beckler Museum's Discover, Create, and Celebrate Program as well. During the pandemic, a lot of those experiences are happening online, and we're connecting with residents so that they can continue to participate in the Culture Blocks experiences as well. And we've seen how it helps with their mental health, educational experiences, and more. Matthews-based artists have been a fixture in the Culture Blocks Program by ASC investing over $40,000 in them to deliver programming at home and across the county. Another example is visual art activities for senior citizens, which we know is a population that really craves arts and cultural experiences, by Art by Jewel at Southview Recreation Center, again, before the pandemic, but many of those things have moved online. Lastly, through our Artist Support Program, ASC partners with the North Carolina Arts Council to fund professional and artistic development for emerging and creative artists. I like to call them the Selfish Grants because it really helps with their professional development and enhance their skills and abilities to create work or improve their business operations and capacity so they can work on their business. In recent years, the grants have supported Matthews creatives in pursuing their professional development from a wireless microphone to the purchase of helping them record a single. So, that's just a sample of the work that we've been doing in the Town of Matthews. Thank you again for your trust and your consideration of increasing your investment in the Arts and Science Council to $35,000 in FY '22. Before I toss it to my colleagues, I also want to give a special thanks to Mayor Pro Tem Renee Gardner, who graciously sits on ASC's Board of Directors as an appointee representing the southern towns. Her guidance and feedback have provided invaluable to us, and we look forward to continuing to serve the residents of Matthews together. I also want to thank the entire board for the appointment of Jennifer Stone Carroll to join Mayor Pro Tem Gardner in representing Matthews on ASC's Geographic Advisory Council for the southeast area. Both ladies are helping keep these lines of communications open, so I want to thank both of them. I'm now gonna hand it over to our speakers who have kindly offered to share their stories with you tonight. First, you'll hear from June Bayless, Gabby Lats, and Amy Dunn, representing Matthews Playhouse, and then you'll hear from Andrea Downs, again, a Matthews-based artist, teaching artist, and creative. Take it away, June.
Thank you, Krista. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all so much for having us here tonight. First, I'd like to start by thanking the Town of Matthews. For the last 25 years, we would not be the organization we are without your constant and continued support. But we would also like to thank the Arts and Science Council of Mecklenburg County for their support. Since 2016, we've received an operational grant from ASC, and prior to 2016, we received project grants back to, I believe, 2007. We've got a couple of volunteers here tonight who'd like to share their arts experience that they've had through Matthews Playhouse. First is Gabby Lats. She's a 15-year-old actress and student at Matthews Playhouse. And secondly will be Amy Dunn. She's a board member and a super volunteer. They're going to tell you what the arts have done to change their lives. Take it away, Gabby.
Hello, my name is Gabby Lats, and I'm 15 years old. With the support of the Town of Matthews and the Arts and Science Committee, Matthews Playhouse has allowed me to express the arts through singing, dancing, and acting. I've been at Matthews Playhouse since I was seven years old. In total, I've taken eight classes, been in 10 audition productions, and gained technical theater experience through The Haunted Trail and other productions that Matthews has to offer. Being at Matthews has been amazing. I have opportunities I don't get anywhere else, and I've made friends and connections all throughout Charlotte and even South Carolina. Matthews Playhouse has given me skills to have confidence and poise that I will carry throughout my life in situations like these. Public speaking is easier for me and in front of my peers. Sorry. In my part-time job, Matthews Playhouse, my acting skills have allowed me to stay quick on my feet and always remain positive in any situation presented towards me. Matthews Playhouse has not only been a place where I can learn, but it's also become a home away from home. Through finding Matthews Playhouse, I have found all the local businesses surrounding it. I have places to go get coffee and shop for clothing with my friends, but also volunteer and go out for dinner with my family and many other cool things that Matthews has to offer. Matthews Playhouse has given me a place where everyone has a job to do and everyone fits in. So, thank you to the Arts and Science Council and the Town of Matthews for making that possible for me.
Okay, the next item will be a short video that Mr. Camp will share his screen and run for us.
All right, bear with me for a moment. Just let me know if there's any audio issues.
We're not hearing the audio.
No audio, Jay.
I apologize. I have audio on my end. I don't know why it's not streaming through Zoom. Lori, just wanna go to the next one.
Uh, hang on one moment. Let me see if I can run it from my end. One moment, please.
Can you hear that?
It's very low, very low volume.
It'll be as high as we can go.
Lori, I'm wondering if you could, wouldn't mind sending the video as a follow-up to Commissioners?
Yeah, we can absolutely do that. Let me start over. We'll run it through, and then I will disperse it to everyone afterwards as well. How about that?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I understand that you guys can't hear it at all, so I'll just make sure that we disperse it to everyone afterwards.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Our final speaker is, again, Matthews-based artist Andrea, excuse me, Andrea Downs.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here. And if I could just say, Gabby, that was incredible. So, love to hear your story. I'm going to speak with you for a few minutes about impact. Airing Out the Dirty Laundry is an ongoing participatory grassroots community art movement that began in February 2018, literally in my family room in Sarthus Forest. It began as a celebration of the truth that all women have a story to tell and as a response to the silencing of women. For three years, we, and by we, I mean, I'm speaking directly about not just myself, but the women that have chosen to be a part of this ongoing movement. We have been creating opportunities for all women and femmes to share experiences of strength, hope, unity, and resistance of oppression and justice and exclusion through visual storytelling, and more recently, through audio storytelling and a new participatory collection that's titled Message Received. Since February of 2018, more than 400 women have participated, and hundreds more people in our community have been directly impacted by engaging in the more than 40 pop-up and longer installations of women's stories joined together on Laundry Clothes Lines. I'm just gonna mention two to note for this evening. The first one is Yard Art Day that I participated in. If you're not familiar with Yard Art Day, it was started by Charlotte Legend and Shiro, as I refer to her, and photographer Deborah Triplet. And it happens each Labor Day all over Charlotte, and the whole idea is that it is an installation of art that is curated by the community for the community. I participated in that a number of times, but the wonderful thing about it is that it brought people from all over Charlotte and all over our county directly to Matthews because they could find me on a map. The other installation that was much longer was at the Mint Museum, and this was an installation that was supported directly through my Cultural Vision Grant through ASC. And the beautiful part about that installation is that it was five months long and that it brought all of the stories, all 400 of them, together to be also installed at a major art institution in Charlotte. While Laundry Day workshops started and still continue in my home in Sarthus Forest, I structured and wrote my ASC Cultural Vision Grant to connect the movement with other organizations, artists, and individuals in Charlotte where we could hold space for women together as community partners. And the beautiful side effect of all of this was not just the friendships with folks, but that it created a beautiful network that spread all over Charlotte. The Cultural Vision Grant that I received made all of this possible. Specifically, it helped me create a bridge from airing out the Dirty Laundry in Matthews to Charlotte and way beyond the borders of our county and our state, and what I love to refer to as a lifeline that continuously weaves together women's individual and collective histories. Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much, Ms. Terrell. I was a high school classmate of your predecessor, Chief Bryant. I knew a good friend of his for many years. And I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you in person, but I've seen many of your interviews and heard many of them on the radio, so I think ASC's in good hands with your leadership. I'd like to ask Mayor Pro Tem Gardner if you have anything to add as a board member of ASC.
Um, I have, you know, I'm kind of a newbie to the Board of Directors, one of the newer members, but continually impressed with Krista and her approach to leadership with ASC. She is a great leader, and we are in good hands with her at the helm. And just to kind of elaborate on Andrea's success, I saw recently that the Guerrilla Girls, who are just internationally known, have highlighted her work publicly, which to me, as sort of an art geek, is just incredible. It's a big deal. And, you know, it's amazing to see something like a $2,000 grant from ASC can make that happen. You guys are doing great work, and we are lucky to have ASC's involvement in Matthews.
So, we appreciate your presentations tonight, and we will certainly consider your funding request. I think it's always good to see the breadth and width of ASC's contributions to our community, so thank you very much.
Thank you again for having us.
All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Receive an Update on COVID-19 from our Emergency Operations Center Commander, Rob Kinnenberg.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today represents day 374 of COVID-related activity here in the county. As of this morning, we crossed the 100,000 cases mark with 100,029 cases this morning, 905 deaths, and only 19 clusters in outbreak status, which is a significant decrease. Matthews has 60 residents who are in isolation protocol for COVID in 50 different locations. Uh, Matthews has 60 residents who are in isolation protocol for COVID in 50 different locations. The, the, the numbers, the matrix seem to ebb and flow over the last two weeks. Uh, the 100,000 case mark represents just shy of a 5% increase, which is up from the previous two weeks. Um, 905 deaths, uh, represents a 2% increase, which is down over two weeks. So the, the metrics continue to, to come and go. Mecklenburg County continues to see a decline in all the key metrics, including hospitalizations related to COVID. But as you've seen in the news, uh, we're, we're worried about the variant strains and the effects they will have. Um, under the state's color coding system, uh, all counties surrounding Mecklenburg have moved to the significant or yellow category, uh, except Gaston, which is in the orange or elevated category. Governor Cooper did relax restrictions in Executive Order 195 back in February, the end of February. Uh, we have not seen, uh, a large increase due to those relaxed restrictions, but we are watching some states that have in part or in whole, uh, opened up to see what happens there. Um, testing continues to decline. Uh, vaccinations continue to increase. Uh, as of today, 165,000 Mecklenburg County residents were partially vaccinated and a hu- just over 101,000 have been fully vaccinated. Uh, that represents more than 10% of Mecklenburg County. Uh, Public Health's main facility at Bojangles is now going to be operated by StarMed. So our, the, the participation by EMTs and paramedics has lessened. But at the same time, clinics around the county have increased, uh, including round two at the Sportsplex next Tuesday, where 400 people will receive their second shot. Uh, that's, that's the end of my report. I'll take any questions you might have.
Chief, I've got a question. Could, can you review the color coding system for us? Uh, what's the best and, uh, not best? I know we're yellow now. Where is it?
The best is yellow. Uh, it's our goal to, to be below, I think it's 125 new cases daily on average. Uh, we're just above that. Um, the next is orange, uh, which is an elevated, uh, status. And then red is where most of the state was back in January.
Okay. And, and can you, uh, for the public's benefit, tell us who is currently eligible to get a vaccination if they desire to go?
Um, they're referred to as Groups 1, 2, 3, and 4. All essential workers that are in forward-facing roles are eligible. All government workers, uh, again, in forward-facing roles are eligible. All persons in long-term care, be it in the home or in a facility, or persons that provide long-term care are eligible. And Group 4 is the latest group, which includes persons with, uh, multiple comorbidities or multiple health problems that might be impacted by COVID.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions, uh, Pastor Whitley?
Uh, thank you. I don't have a question, just an update. Also, on April the 2nd, Mount Mariah will have its second round of vaccination. Uh, 300 people on April the 2nd, 2nd from 8:00 AM to 2:30 PM. Those are just the second people who have got it the first time. Should be receiving a, uh, an appointment this time telling you what time to come get yours. Also, that's through Atrian Hill, and that's the Moderna shot. But that's 300 that be given on April the 2nd.
Hey, thank you. Do we have any other questions for Chief Kinnenberg? Seeing none, thank you, Chief. We'll move on to agenda item number seven. Do we have any items to be added to the agenda, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr.
All right, we'll move on to, uh, agenda item number eight, public comment. Lori, could I ask you to recognize each of the, uh, public commenters as they come up and I'll just sit back and listen?
Uh, absolutely. And I'll give a rundown just so everyone who will be making comment knows what order they'll be proceeding in. We, we have several. We're going to start with Doug Rose, then Paul Campbell, then Jim Taylor, then Jack Santinello, then Stephen Wilfong, and then Martha Kraus. And then there are a few, uh, written comments that I will read into the record afterwards. So Doug Rose will be first. Um, for all of our public speakers, please know that you have four minutes to make your comments. There will be a timer on the screen. You can start speaking when the timer starts and, um, we'll also give you a reminder if you start going over that time. So, Mr. Rose, you can begin when the timer starts.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Go ahead.
Greetings, Mayor and Town Commissioner. My comments are in regards to item 10C on the agenda. My name is Doug Rose and I am the current Chairperson of the Matthews Veterans Advisory Committee. I am honored along with Larry Stowicki to lead this committee in representing and voicing matters of interest from our service members, veterans, and families to the town of Matthews. I moved to Matthews just over a year ago and have enjoyed my newly found home. I cannot wait until the pandemic ends and really appreciate what the town has to offer from its restaurants, shopping, entertainment, and parks. When I researched Matthews, I discovered on the town website, a vision for the desired future. This, like the current vote for the name change to Stump Town Park, brought only a small amount of citizens' voices, less than 200, but enough for the town to draft a desired future plan. In this plan, there was mentioned, however small, a request for a park to be developed and named for veterans. One of the first and major actions of my committee during my short tenure was to discuss the renaming of Stump Town Park. I have learned so much in the last three months about this town and I have met so many great citizens. Matthews has a rich history that is based on small, family-friendly town atmosphere, making it a special place to live, work, and raise a family. As for renaming the park, I never expected the amount of politics would play into this. Being a proactive person, I reached out to the Parks and Recreation Director and the PrAC Chairman to work together on this issue. I followed up with the Rotary Club and the American Legion for suggestions and input as these two organizations were responsible for the beautiful tributes which we currently have at the veterans, uh, for the veterans at Stump Town Park. It is truly remarkable what they have done and what the town has approved for veterans to date. After several meetings and discussions on the topic, IMVAC agreed with PrAC to enhance the existing Veterans Memorial in, uh, with delineations in lieu of a name change. We realized a name change was controversial, but thought an alternative solution would be a win-win for the community. IMVAC worked with the American Legion and during our March meeting, agreed to an alternative plan of a delineated park for veterans at Stump Town. Mr. Corey Tean emailed the board in mid-February informing the town commissioners of the PrAC and IMVAC's findings along with possible options to delineate Stump Town Park with physical structures and signage. This may be a bit premature, but I truly hope that the town board will consider a separate park, enhancing current Veterans Memorial with minimal features and perhaps removable structures to honor our veterans while keeping Stump Town a festival-friendly park for our residents to enjoy the likes of Matthews Alive, Beach Fest, concerts, and other town events. Again, thank you for what you have done and for what you plan to do for veterans in the future. It is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Paul Campbell is next. Mr. Campbell, please unmute yourself, turn on your camera if you choose, and you can begin speaking when the timer starts.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor. Good to the Commissioners. My name is Francis Paul KFL, now the 905 Evian Lane, Matthews, North Carolina, 28105. I'm not a public speaker, so I may refer to my notes from time to time, probably a whole bunch of times, but, um, when I returned from Vietnam, just let's say there was no homecoming presence. We were shunned, given obscured, and obscene gestures, and I was embarrassed. After years now speaking of even me being a veteran, I finally was starting to feel like people were proud of me as served. Now I'm not so sure after seeing what's going on in Matthews. What should be a positive has become so negative, and I don't know if I should be embarrassed again about being a better. I was personally upset by the last Parks and Rec Committee meeting. I should say I was insulted. I could not believe that a bouncy house and a maple tree, which I have asked about and will not be heard, are more important than a pocket park honoring the men and women that have kept and are keeping the United States of America safe. Another thing that was said at the Parks and Rec Committee was, is less is more. As I said in my email I sent to you, I served and I gave my all. I didn't give less and I, but many more gave more. They gave their lives and they're still giving their lives. I do not want to, I do want to thank those on the committee that spoke up for the veterans, and I'm very, very grateful. So what is more important to Matthews, a bouncy house or the veterans? Please be patriotic and vote for the veterans. Thank you for your time and God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. The next speaker is Jim Taylor. Mr. Taylor? Mr. Taylor, you need to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Lori. Can you not hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. First of all, thank you all very much. I appreciate the opportunity, but I will take a couple of seconds here to congratulate our town attorney, Charlie. Congratulations on 43 years of serving the town of Matthews. Um, you are a tremendous asset to the community and it's worth me taking the time out of my comments to say that to you. Uh, and I treasure your, your, your council while I was there, and I know the current board members do the same. So we'll talk later. Uh, first of all, I'm not going to elaborate too much because every one of you have received my comments via email. And I want to thank those that took the opportunity to reply back. Some of you I agreed with, some of you we completely see, do not see eye to eye on this at all, but you did take the time, uh, to respond and I do appreciate that. Uh, I understand the naming, the renaming of the park potentially is off the table this evening. I believe that is the correct decision for the overall entire community. Uh, Stump Town Park, uh, does have that historical, um, significance within town and, uh, um, just adding those two words would change the overall dynamics and feel of that park. But I believe there's a, there's a, there's a sec- potentially a second question that's going to be raised. Um, but let me address that in a second. Uh, my understanding is the only question that was asked of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and IMVAC was regarding the naming. Council did not officially request anything about additions, delineations, enhancements, et cetera, et cetera, to, to the park. So I believe this evening, the, the only true question that should be decided upon is the naming. But let me, let me get into the recommendation that came from the Parks and Rec and IMVAC. And I fully support this aspect of it. Um, um, the Matthews Veterans Memorial in Stump Town Park has for a long time not been officially recognized by the town. I do believe the town should take the position and officially designate that memorial as the Matthews Veterans Memorial and give it the, the, the credit, give it the, the prestige, put it on the town website in all of our marketing material, put it, um, let the, um, the historic, the history museum, pardon me, the history museum talk about it in their literature and in the signage of Stump Town Park. Make, uh, the sign could be something very similar to Stump Town Park, home of the Matthews Veterans Memorial. And I would encourage you that if you are inclined to move forward and do something uh, with, with an addition or enhancement, delineation, or a pocket park, which I believe is honestly God being taken out of context, I wish you, or I hope you would look at it in the whole totality of the master plan. There are master plans for years for Stump Town Park as well as our other parks in town. And while, uh, the memorial in Stump Town Park is a tremendous, um, gift to the men and women that protect us and serve our, our country, it may not be the perfect location. We could have a Veterans Memorial in every one of our parks, yet have a Veterans Memorial Park in a much more, um, prestigious or a much more open and enhancing, uh, location. Potentially the Pershing Halsey Park, which has been talked about for many years, that potentially having a larger, um, memorial. So I would encourage you to think about that and, and please don't make these one-off decisions in a vacuum. Please look at them holistically, as I said. Another thing is I hope you would, would allow the Chairperson of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission to give comments this evening prior to your vote to give some context to that, uh, to that recommendation. They spent an awful lot of time and did everything you asked them to do and engage the community. And I do think there are a lot more stakeholders in this community, uh, if we are going to do something larger than we have today. Uh, and I would think time is, time is critical here. Put it out to the community, get feedback from everybody involved. And I think that will provide a much better and much more, a, a project that we can all be much more proud of in the long term. Thank you all very much and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Our next speaker is Jack Santinello. Jack, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Mute.
We can hear you now. Oh, you just muted again.
Got it. I'm muted. I'm okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Well, good evening. Thank you, Lori. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council Members, and Town Management Personnel and other guests. My name is Jack Santinello. Like Lori said, a Vietnam veteran, United States veteran, US Air Force, as indicated by my hat, and a Matthews resident for 33 years. Thank you for allowing me to comment regarding the new Veterans Memorial in Stump Town Park. I'm not a politician, so no political remarks for me. It's extremely difficult for me to understand all the resistance that has been given to honoring and remembering our veterans, much of it which I believe is from non-veterans. So it brings up a question. I'm curious. Are there any veterans on the town council? Any of our foreign mayor's veterans? Don't know enough to answer that, but I'm just curious. No one can question that the American Legion has done an outstanding job with generous donations from citizens, current active military personnel, and veterans of enhancing and rebuilding the original memorial built by the Matthews Rotary many years ago. In addition to those folks, we got, I understand the Legion got many donations from like Lowe's Department Store, Lowe's, um, Building Store, things of that nature. The park, it is so beautiful and they add so much to the town of Matthews. The proposed name change of Stump Town Park is not happening, and we heard that a couple minutes ago, so be it. But why can't that small area, the memorial area that is so beautiful, be designated a pocket park? It named in honor of veterans, Matthews Veterans Memorial Park. What is so difficult with that? Why so much resistance? Delineating the area with a, with a sitting wall or with removable benches provides a resting area for parents, grandparents, and others attending park events, sometimes in 90-plus degree heat. Seems to me a win-win for the town and for the people attending the events. I've heard some say that a wall or benches will take away valuable square feet used for the three-day annual event Matthews Alive during the Labor Day weekend. Is it really that much space that it will severely interfere with the festivals, really? Can it not be slightly re-engineered? Think about that. I see that today's unfinished business will address some of my, and my fellow veterans' concerns. So let me close with the following. A few months ago, I sent a poem that honors veterans to the mayor, town council members, and town employees. I would like to repeat the last part of that poem. And listen carefully. It is the veteran who followed our flag into battle. Excuse me. It is a veteran who defended our flag. It is a veteran who saluted our flag. It is a veteran whose coffin was draped in our flag and still is. It is a veteran. It has always been a veteran. It will always be the veteran. So I say to you, where would you be? Where would I be? My family, my grandchildren, today, without, without our veterans defending. without our veterans defending our country, the United States of America, our town of Matthews, and our freedom. Excuse me. Thank you for the opportunity to help those of you instantly with and understanding what our veterans and those active military members serving today, and I repeat, have done, have sacrificed for our country, the United States of America, our town of Matthews, and our freedom, allowing us to have this beautiful park and all those events. Let the town of Matthews honor our veterans appropriately and thankfully. Sincerely, with all respect to everyone here, Jack Santinella, obviously a proud veteran. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santinella. Mr. Stephen Wilfong is our next speaker. Mr. Wilfong, I think you're muted. Stephen, you need to unmute yourself, sir.
Am I unmuted now?
You are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Your Honor, and fellow commissioners. I'd like to begin by thanking the board for allowing me to speak this evening. I thank you all for taking the time to examine and consider the adjustments to the name of Stumptown Park by adding Veterans Memorial or the consideration in the creation of a Pocket Park in the rear area of the existing park. As a veteran of two tours of Vietnam and a proud recipient of the Veteran of the Year for the town of Matthews last year, I would like to share with you the incredible importance this veterans memorial has to myself and many of my fellow veterans. When I came home from Da Nang in 1970, our commanding officer told us we were not allowed to fly in our uniform because it would not be well-received and we would, and could even be assaulted. It made us all feel as if we were sneaking back into our own country. For a very long time, you didn't tell anyone you were there. The creation of this wonderful memorial said to all vets, especially those from the town of Matthews, that we didn't forget you, and we didn't forget your sacrifice, and we want to make sure that you understand that we are proud of you. For the first-class memorial for all North Carolina citizens to enjoy, I believe it will also generate economic impact to the community of Matthews. Most of us have never had a place where we could go and sit in silence and remember those in our units who did not come home with us, or our fathers and mothers, grandparents, or uncles who served proudly this country and did not come home, the incredible sacrifices that these individuals made. I now, for the first time, have some place to bring my children and grandchildren so that they can see the dedications of so many wonderful Americans and a place for them to learn that history. I believe that we would not have the very park or the ability to have these meetings if it wasn't for the sacrifices of the very, very veterans. This memorial says in a loud, clear voice, "Thank you for all your love of the country and the love of our flag." Sometimes, we must not just talk the talk, but walk the walk. It's really difficult to make a small, is it that difficult to make a small change? I think that this says loud and clear that we honor you, and it's something that we have lacked for a very long time, and only in the last seven years has a community ever said, "Thank you." This is a loud way and a clear way for the people of Matthews to make it absolutely clear that we honor our veterans to this day. I thank you for granting me the repeat the hearing on this important issue and giving me the time out of your meeting to provide a voice for our veterans, and I respectfully submit this. Stephen Wilfong, Vietnam veteran. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilfong. Our next speaker is Martha Kraus. Ms. Kraus, can you unmute yourself? Martha, you're muted.
You hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, mayor commissioners and staff. My name is Martha Kraus, and I live at 803 Elizabeth Lane and have lived here since 1973. My husband, Will, is a Navy veteran, and I was a Navy wife for four years. We are in favor of veteran recognition with the park, just not one that encroaches on Stumptown Park. That venue serves many uses from concerts to events. The Rotary Veterans Memorial is a fine recognition to the people who served, as is the American Legion Additions, who also recognizes veteran service. As far as removable benches, I think this would be a bit cumbersome. If a delineation is needed between the two areas, perhaps a knee-high wall directly next to the sidewalk could serve as a seating area. It should not be distanced from the walk, but adjacent to the walk. I appreciate the efforts of the Parks and Veterans advisories in their efforts to come towards a joint recommendation. We should put a hold on any further enlargement of the veterans area at Stumptown and investigate another option to make a veterans memorial park. I feel certain there would be certain, there would be support for a venue that would provide a more spacious park to honor veterans. For example, a portion of the Perser Holsey Park is to have an area for veterans recognition. The Perser Holsey is about 70 acres between 51 and Phillips Road, and it already contains some great walking and biking trails, as well as community gardens. It is my understanding that there has been an intent to have a veterans memorial there. Granted, it would not be accomplished overnight, but this would be a larger area that would be much better suited to a memorial park. For those of you who have seen the Korean War Memorial in this hill, you know what a larger open space does for the whole ambience of a memorial. Therefore, it's surely better to focus on making a more spacious veterans park at Perser Holsey than trying to rework Stumptown Park. Both Perser and Holsey were World War II veterans. In my opinion, it would be an honor to have the veterans park there. This is about honoring veterans, past, present, and future. And as a closing comment, a Greek proverb reminds us that a society grows great when old men plant trees in whose shade they know they shall never set. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kraus. All right, I will read some comments that were submitted by folks who weren't able to attend the meeting tonight. The first is from Heather Laws, and she writes, "Greetings. The updated veterans memorial built within Matthews Stumptown Park is beautiful. The landscaping and overall design are tasteful and lovely and provide a beautiful backdrop for this lasting tribute to the veterans from the Matthews area. Once the anticipated mural is completed, the town will certainly have a memorial, which will be a destination point for many veterans and other visitors. Veterans do not receive enough recognition from their communities. Matthews creation of a veterans memorial Pocket Park within Stumptown Park is the perfect answer to giving our local veterans the lasting recognition they long for and deserve without having to rename the existing park. Personally, I see this as a superior option to renaming the whole park because it gives the veterans memorial park a focus of its own. I sincerely hope the commissioners will approve this option. Thank you very much for your consideration, Heather Laws." The next message is from Mike Ruschow, and it says, "If I had a vote, I would be in favor of option two and three. Designate the veterans memorial area within Stumptown Park as a Pocket Park. Suggested name for Pocket Park, Matthews Veterans Memorial Park. Next, engage the landscape architect to design the Pocket Park delineations to include physical boundaries, structures, and signage. Scope of work should cover a present-day design and a master plan design for the future. This work would be done with the appropriate town advisory committees. The goal would be to develop a mutually beneficial and executable design for everyone involved. Options two and three would be beneficial for everyone in our community, a win-win approach. For our citizens and veterans of Matthews, we would be proud to have a Pocket Park in Matthews that honors our veterans, especially those who gave the ultimate sacrifice for their country. This Pocket Park would be unique among NC communities. Families of our service people who gave the ultimate sacrifice would be grateful for this gesture. Huxor American Legion Post 235 has accomplished a remarkable project in the restoration, upgrades, and additions to veterans memorials in Stumptown Park over the last 10 months. The post would be incredibly grateful for this gesture. We would have a place to rest and reflect on our country's military history. For the community of Matthews, we would have a field trip destination for youth groups from our schools and other youth groups, such as scouts and church. The Pocket Park would be an excellent backdrop for educational purposes. This park would be part of all town of Matthews promotional strategies, another selling point for our community. This park would be a part of the Matthews Chamber promotional events, another selling point for commerce in Matthews. This Pocket Park would not be tucked away in some rarely visited part of Matthews. Being adjacent to Stumptown Park, it would be extremely visible to the community and everyone that attends the many events involving Stumptown Park. This Pocket Park would be a win-win for everyone in our community. Just my personal thoughts. I will yield to the wisdom of the board. Sincerely, Mike Ruschow, citizen of Matthews, North Carolina, since 1994." Our final message is from Jim Hardzinski, and it says, "I am here voicing my opinion for the renaming of Stumptown Park to include veterans memorial in the park name. From this citizen's perspective, the first and original proposal, adding veterans memorial to the name Stumptown Park, is the appropriate step in honoring our veterans. This is my recommendation. The Pocket Park proposal is also acceptable, but it presents implementation, timeline, and resource concerns. Adding the two words veterans memorial appropriately completes the updated memorial at Stumptown Park. In addition, renaming to Stumptown Veterans Memorial Park will not require any physical changes to the area in front of the memorial, and it will not create physical barriers to the use of the area in front of the memorial for festivals. In addition, the implementation for the name change is the easiest to implement. I have heard viewpoints that the two words will detract or discourage from use of the park. Honestly, I fail to understand how the naming of the park to Stumptown Veterans Memorial Park will preclude anyone from wanting to use the park for relaxation, play, physics, et cetera, that the parks are intended for. The Pocket Park concept, Veterans Memorial Park within Stumptown Park, is a nice, in fact, great idea to delineate the memorial area from the remaining part of Stumptown Park. If not for the first proposal, I will be, I would be in full support of this proposal. The bench seating provides the additional benefit of a sizable organized row of seats for viewing presentations on the stage from the rear of the park. This concept, however, will take additional resources to implement, as well as the time and expense for a landscape architect to design the delineations, adding to the implementation time and overall cost. However, as I mentioned later, the bench delineation concept could be included in future park expansion plans regardless of the votes. I personally think the memorial serves as both a remembrance and celebration of the veterans' service in life, past and present. I think the name of veterans, excuse me, I think the name of Stumptown Veterans Park would be appropriate. My recommendation, rename Stumptown Park to Stumptown Veterans Memorial Park. Please vote yes to Stumptown Veterans Memorial Park or Matthews Veterans Park, Pocket Park. The delineation wall slash bench can be added when the town implements the park expansion plan with the addition inclusion of the two houses on South Fremont Street, already owned by the town, and the additional one or two properties the town plans to acquire on South Fremont Street. These properties would allow stage relocation and the necessary room for the delineation at the top of the hill. Please vote for the veterans, vote to honor their service and their sacrifice. Vote for Stumptown Park, excuse me, vote for Stumptown Veterans Memorial Park. Thank you. Those are all of the comments we have received that will be read aloud.
Hey, thank you very much, Lori. We appreciate everyone that took the time and effort to publicly comment tonight. Let's move on to agenda item number nine, the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept our consent agenda A through G4.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Whitley, a second by Commissioner McCool. We'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitley?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
And Commissioner McCool?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That passes unanimously. I don't believe I said at the top of the meeting that Commissioner Bland was unable to participate tonight. He's, I believe, participating in a trial this week, so unable to join our meeting tonight. We'll move on to agenda item number 10, unfinished business 10A. Consider integrated turf management program. Ralph Masur. Or CJ? Not sure which of you.
Mr. Ramsor will be presenting. Ralph, please turn your mic and camera on.
I believe you're muted, Ralph.
Okay, sorry, I stepped away. I heard some of that conversation. I didn't know it was my turn. Sorry. So, last time I met with you folks, we talked about having to receive that $10,000 grant from Stony Fields Play Free Initiative. And within that grant, they stipulated that we would no longer use glyphosate, which is basically Roundup, and that also we would not purchase any more Roundup for particular locations. We specified the locations as Perser Park, particularly the dog park that's coming up, and the two community gardens. So we will no longer be spraying glyphosate at those locations. Then we went from there, and we were challenged to develop a long-term integrated turf management plan, which is what we proceeded to do. With the help of Life Fitzpatrick and Tim Ayers, who put it together, we came up with a preliminary integrated pest management plan. And it included, I'm going to just read off my notes here. In order to determine the impact of our resource, Public Works Landscape Staff developed a preliminary integrated turf management plan, which will track the application of pesticides and glyphosate, synthetic and organic, and measure the efficacy and impact on our operations, specifically the demand on labor and cost of materials. And so the staff will, this is a very proactive program, and the staff will proactively pursue. There's four individual categories that are part of this plan. There's a biological aspect to it, there's a cultural aspect to it, there's a chemical, and there's a mechanical. And all these play together. They all work together in a holistic manner so that we can manage the turf, make it a healthier turf. And if you have a healthy turf, you're actually eliminating, eventually eliminating, most of your weeds in your turf areas. It's not going to stop weeds from getting established, but we'll try to have some preventative measures in place, such as pre-emergence that we'll put out in early spring. Basically, pre-emergent creates a barrier that stops a lot of the weeds from germinating. So that should help. The idea of mowing the turf higher. Some people mow their grass and feel like they've done a good job. If they hit some rocks and create some cloud dusts, they feel like they've mowed their lawn. What we're going to do is, we're going to make sure that on fescue areas, that in order to create a healthy turf, that we're mowing it about five and a quarter inches high. On Bermuda lawns, it'll be two to three inches. So this, this should help to eliminate some of the weeds that we have to deal with on a regular basis. And at the same time, we have all these different locations from high priority around Town Hall to maybe less priority at Squirrel Lake Park, so that the thresholds that we establish at all these locations are going to be different. So one example is the town green area right there in front of Town Hall. Some of the things that we do proactively to create that better turf is aeration and overseeding. We'll take soil tests to see what we need to do in terms of macro and micronutrients that need to be in place and the pH levels. Make sure they're correct. We'll do a certain amount of fertilization, nitrogen applications. Of course, pre-emergence that I've mentioned will be done early spring. Scheduled watering that's necessary, particularly after, after about May through the rest of the season, really, especially on the fescue lawns. Mowing, like I mentioned, at a high Mowing, like I mentioned, at a height of at least five and a quarter inches so that it shades out and competes well with the weeds. And then the idea of using selective herbicides. Now, you know, they're going to be synthetic, just to let you know, the selective herbicides that we use on the turf areas, the fescue. So it won't kill the fescue. It'll only it'll only select those weeds that the chemicals we use are specific for. It's not going to be Roundup. It's not going to be glyphosate. But what we will do, we'll make an effort in the coming months to use less and less of the glyphosate, and we'll also investigate more of the organic products. Even though we know that they're going to cost a little bit more, take a little bit more labor to put out. And with this program, which Tim Ayers has already developed a calendar of sorts, so month-by-month activity that will happen throughout the year. And then, being the first year, we'll monitor, we'll monitor the progress. We'll see the cost in terms of overhead, how much labor is involved. And maybe by the end of the year, we'll also see how much less glyphosate we've used, and maybe a little bit more of organic products as opposed to synthetic. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Ralph. I really appreciate your your willingness to undertake this grand experiment, and as an avid gardener, I'm anxious to see what you discover. If it's possible to use these. I know, Ralph, you probably weren't real thrilled to start off with this, but you've really embraced it and are going to give it a good try, and we really appreciate it. We're really grateful to have someone with your expertise on town staff do a great job. And I want to publicly thank you for that, and really thank you for trying this. I think we need a roll call vote to embrace this plan. Is that correct? Mr. Blodgett?
Just a point of information. So besides the community gardens and dog park, we're also going to do this at Stumptown Park. Because as we talked about with Carboro, one of the standards here is community standards, is the community to keep these weeds out is, I would say, impossible without. Well, it's going to be very hard. So, we are going to also implement this program at Stumptown so we can see like, okay, do we get a lot of complaints about the weeds? Everybody say, well, we're not using Roundup, so it's great. So I just want to make sure the board is aware of that, too. And we're not asking for, you're welcome to vote on it. We're not asking for.
This was for information only? Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, great. Thank you very much, Ralph. Are there any other questions or comments for Ralph? Again, Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Mayor Higdon said. I'm excited to see that you guys have worked so hard on coming up with a plan and hope that it will work well for Matthews. So thank you so much for your hard work.
I think it's, I really believe that it is important. I think there's enough evidence to say that glyphosate and some of these synthetic products are not the best for for the community's health. And so it's really worthwhile for us to pursue this. I totally agree.
Yeah, and thank you. Let's move on then to the next unfinished business item. B, select a consultant for the North Ames Street project. Dana Stujenke?
Everyone, I wanted to share my screen if I could. See if this works. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for having me tonight. We are going to talk about North Ames Street sidewalk grant. And we are asking for you all to allow us to move forward with engineering and design services, and I'm just going to walk you through this. Make everything work properly. Okay. So, we had the first community block grant that we went after was in spring of 2020. And we initially asked for $112,300. And this was going to fund the following three things. The environmental document, which we have completed, the design, engineering of the sidewalk, curb gutter, and drainage. And this is the work that we're looking for you all to approve tonight. And right away, an easement acquisition, a utility coordination, and relocation. And this work hasn't begun and won't start until after the design phase. So, in the board memo, I wrote that, so in February 2021, the board approved additional dollars for a second phase of the grant, so a second CDBG application to finish it. And in the board memo, I wrote 346,400, and that was the total amount, not the second phase. I just want to clarify that. So the second phase, we're asking for slightly more money than in the application that you saw back in February. And it's, I, basically what happened is that we had the North Ames Street design came in higher than we anticipated. And so what we did was, we talked to Community Development Block Grant folks, and they basically told us that we could amend our grant application and add on the additional dollars, the $23,400 that we needed, and not have to increase our match. So, no more money from the town than what we had initially anticipated. And, you know, Hazen was able to sign off on that last week. And so basically, while we are tonight going to, hopefully you all will approve the signing of the contract for additional engineering, it is going to cost additional money. But we do have, we do have those funds tentatively in hand. The Community Development Block Grant gets approval officially through the Mecklenburg County Board Action. So that hasn't happened yet. That won't happen until May. But we have enough money to move forward in this fiscal year. I hope I explained that okay. I apologize if that was confusing. But basically, the town match, I guess the bottom line for this project is, the town match will not change. We went in and sort of went backwards and had them amend some dollars for this fiscal year for this, the second grant, so that we could add it on to the first grant. So let me get you to the nuts and bolts of what I'm asking for this evening, now that I think I didn't say that very well. The proposal solution for the first Community Development Block Grant for the design and engineer is basically for Kim Lee Horn and Associates. They were selected after we requested qualifications, you know, it was advertised. We got seven firms, which we were pretty surprised about, because it is a, it's not a huge project. And then we had staff select. We had a committee, and we chose Kim Lee Horn. We negotiated with the firm to get the fees down. You know, I think they're used to doing sort of Cadillac projects for NC DOT. And we really, for this small piece of sidewalk, needed, you know, a lesser, something that was very buildable, but not as, you know, NC DOT requires a lot of stuff. That to build stuff isn't, I think, on our town roads, isn't, you know, the same thing. So, the bottom line is their strip and fee came in at 80 to 500. And so we are asking that you all recommend the approval. So we have the money. We have that money in hand because we got that initial grant for $112,000. This will take us till probably January of next year to complete. So, we will be rolling into that next fiscal year in July. So we will, you know, pay the consultant with the first round that we've gotten. And then, starting in July, well, you know, or whenever that we run out of money for the additional 20,000 or so, we'll be able to pick it up with the second round application. So it should be knock on wood seamless. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Do we have any questions for Dana? Can we go back to the gallery view, Lori?
Yeah, I'll stop standing.
We have any questions for Dana? If not, do we have any motions?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we give the town the ability to get a consultant for the North Ames Street project as noted in the memo around what was asked for tonight.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Whitley, a second from Mayor Pro Tem Garner. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Miller? You're muted, sir.
Sorry, I just want to add in the dollar value for specifics that we authorize him to enter into a contract with Kim Lee Horn for 82,500.
Do you accept that amendment, Commissioner Whitley?
That's fine. That was in the memo where I said the memo that she submitted tonight, so that was in there.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitley?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Commissioner McCool?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that passes unanimously. We're going to move on to agenda item 10C, consider Stumptown Park naming options. And before I turn it over to Hazen or Corey, I'd like to make a few comments myself about this. Been quite a lot of, as we could tell from our public comment, quite a bit of discussion around this. And I feel the entire subject of the Veterans Memorial in Stumptown Park and all the things that we're discussing about it need a little context. So I'll try not to be too repetitive, but hit some of the highlights. During a Memorial Day event at Stumptown Park last May, it was noted that the memorial wall was stained with mildew. The American flag could not be lowered as it was torn and entangled in a tree, and the whole area was in generally need of a makeover. The Matthews Hooksoar American Legion Post 235 stepped up and with the town board's approval, cleaned and enhanced the area with new monuments, plantings, and lighting, all at no cost to the town. And public feedback on the memorial's current state has been overwhelmingly positive. During one of the work sessions at the site, a veteran, who for the record, and to be clear about this, was not post commander Mark Difano, asked me if the town would consider renaming the entire park Stumptown Veterans Memorial Park. I'd like to note that this is not a new idea. It's been discussed publicly since at least 2018 in some of our advisory board minutes. I informed the person that asked me about what the process was and what was required to rename the park. I never dreamed that the request would be so contentious or controversial. The park's Recreation and Cultural Resource Advisory Committee has held two public hearings, or the committee, I'm sorry, on the renaming idea, and also solicited written input. A tally of 155 responses indicated 73% were in favor of the renaming of the entire park and 27% against. And based on this result, the board would have been justified, in my opinion, on going forward with the renaming. However, a vocal minority, including four former mayors, all of which I have spoken to, two former town commissioners, and several other respected leaders in our town, because of the historical nature of the park, asked that we consider another route or a compromise that would not change the park name. At this point, the town's Veterans Advisory Committee began working in conjunction with the park and the rec committee to find such a solution, but unfortunately, they could not agree on a joint compromise 100%. The idea IMVAC and the American Legion embrace involves carving off and naming a very small piece of Stumptown Park, the Matthews Veterans Memorial Park. It would essentially include a sliver of land at the north end of the park running adjacent to the sidewalk. I am in favor of this option. Allow me to explain why. First, this action would allow Matthews to join thousands of other towns and municipalities that honor their veterans with a park. Matthews has been in existence for 142 years, and we do not have a Veterans Park. I think it's time to change that. Contrary to some of the received comments, these are not dreary, sullen places of grief and mourning. Rather, they are vibrant, family-friendly locations that celebrate the contributions of veterans. We need to look no further than Mint Hill. Mint Hill has a Veterans Memorial Park. I would not say that that is a sullen, dreary place. We're not considering installing a cemetery. This is merely a memorial. And I can think of no better juxtaposition of a parent enjoying an event like Matthews Alive or Food Truck Friday, and having the opportunity to view the memorial and explain the many contributions our brave veterans have contributed to our freedom and way of life. Our veterans also deserve this recognition at our most popular park, not on the edge of town where there's been no concrete planned or funding for a Veterans Memorial. I remind this board that the average Vietnam veteran's age now is 70, and that World War II veterans are in their 90s. And I don't think it's prudent to tell these people at these advanced ages to wait, and maybe someday, years and years from now, we might honor you with a park. Time is short. Our action tonight would also separate or mitigate the biggest objection to having a separate park. That is, that it would somehow infringe on large events held there like Food Truck Friday, Symphony in the Park, or Matthews Alive. Let me for the record state that I greatly respect both the work and opinions of people like Leigh Ann Moore and Julie B., Bobby Ladner, great citizens, some employees of the town. I think if you look up excellence in arranging large-scale events, you'll see a picture of Leigh Ann Moore. So, very much appreciative of their efforts. So I'm committed to making sure that any future delineation of the parks create no unreasonable hindrance to using the park as they are currently. The veterans have stated they're fine with this. Future delineation, if we follow the recommendations put forth tonight, will be designed by a professional landscape architect. They'll be fully vetted by our advisory boards and town staff, and they'll be voted on again by this board. And I will only support a gentle delineation that will not affect these large-scale events. Finally, having a Matthews Veterans Memorial Park adjacent to Stumptown Park is the right thing to do. My support is not contingent on any one individual's wishes, rather, an entire community of brave men and women and their friends and family, and I admire them greatly. Here are a few examples. My father, John O. Higdon, has a paper brick emblazoned with his name at the Matthews Memorial. He joined the Army at age 17. After three years, spent the next three-plus decades in the Army Reserve. And while my friend's father spent summer vacations at the beach, lounging by the pool or golfing, my dad went to summer camp. He spent his vacations training, doing logistics, planning, and keeping us safe. My father is 87 years old and thankfully still alive, and I would like to have a memorial park in his honor. Many of you, particularly Commissioners Urban and Miller, may remember my friend and work colleague, Jack Deering. Jack Deering was my first campaign manager. Jack was also another proud Army veteran, a very affable man with a good sense of humor. But Jack and I would sometimes carpool between Combraco Plants in Matthews and Pageau in South Carolina. And sometimes he would relate stories from his experiences at Vietnam. Some of them were very pleasant. He once told me that donuts were airdropped to the front and how happy all the soldiers were to get donuts in a time of war. Jack's job was to fly missions into the jungle in his helicopter to retrieve fallen soldiers, most of them deceased in battle. And one time when we were driving between the plants, it was a particularly dreary day. It was raining. Jack became very pensive. We discussed some of his combat missions, and I questioned why healthy soldiers would be sent back into dangerous situations under heavy fire to pick up those known to be deceased. And Jack's eyes glazed over, and he said, "We don't leave anybody behind, John. We don't do that." I want this memorial park for Jack and others like him. And finally, the last time I spoke with our former IMVAC chair, Tom Cannon, prior to his hospitalization, he relayed to me his joy over the prospect of having a park named for veterans. You see, Tom was a Navy, a Navy veteran, served veteran, and I can still see his smile and his thanking me for my support for this project. So for these and many other brave men and women veterans, I will gladly cast my vote tonight to name a separate park within Stumptown in their honor. It is such an incredibly small and insignificant gesture in comparison to what they have given to us. And I think now is the time to take action. I'll now turn the discussion over to Hazen.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Jay, can you pull up the memo if you're driving? Okay, so, you know, a lot of folks have worked very hard on this. I'm sure the board's read this. I think this is a relatively easy way to break down this issue. And we are recommending separate votes on each one of these. And the first one is to rename the entire park. the entire park to Stumptown Veterans Memorial Park.
Okay, yeah, we'll take separate votes on each of these, so, again, can I ask that I can see everyone again? Thank you. So, do we even need to vote on this if the... Let me just say this, is there any of the elected officials in favor of renaming Stumptown Park to Stumptown Veterans Memorial Park? Would anybody care to put forth that motion? Mayor Pro Tim Garner?
I'm not in favor of it, but I would like to make a comment at the appropriate time. If that's now, then I can do that, but...
I think that's now.
Okay, I just want to explain why I'm not in favor of it, because I think later in the meeting we'll hear that I am in favor of honoring our veterans. But I also grew up going to Stumptown Festival, and it was an annual tradition for our family. Many of the people I know who also grew up in Matthews can't call it Matthews Alive, it's always going to be Stumptown Festival. And I want to sort of honor the legacy of the people who built Stumptown Festival. To me, Stumptown Park is not a memory of cut-down trees, but it is a memory of annual trips and family fun, and winning little mirrored unicorn paintings in the balloon booth, you know. And to me, Stumptown Park is sort of that last remnant of Stumptown Festival. And I would like to see that memory kind of kept in place for me and for many other people.
Thank you. Commissioner Whitley?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not in favor of naming it, however, as I was able to read every comment from everybody that sent it in there. I wanted to go online and find out where the name Stumptown came from. And I found that Matthews, North Carolina, was originally named Stumptown in the early nineteenth century after cotton farmers cleared the land, leaving stumps everywhere. So that's where the word Stumptown comes. And then I wanted to see what Matthews put on its website. In Town of Matthews, I pulled up the Town of Matthews and see on our website, and it says Stumptown Park. One-twenty South Trade, Matthews, North Carolina. Give direction, telephone number, park reservation procedure, dawn to dark. About Stumptown Park. At this location, performance on stage, dancing floor, outdoor grills and picnic area, brick patio, playground, sand volleyball court, veteran memorial site, and restroom. So what are you saying, Larry? Thank y'all for asking. What I'm saying is this, I saw so much uproar on the name. Now, one of the people that was asking tonight about how many commissioners were veterans, and I don't know. I was not a veteran, but I did serve and defend the state of North Carolina while the veterans were in the war. I'm very dear to veterans, as my... Members of my congregation have a lot of veterans in all branches of service that they have given to life. I want to tell you, my first term back in 2016 as a commissioner, I was very drawn to the leaders of the Veterans Memorial. It was in bad condition, Mayor, it needed much repair. It many times, we went out to hear him sit up, and the one-man band sang and honored the veteran. I heard Doug Rose tonight as he spoke, and I thank you, Doug, for your service. I want to talk about George Fawcett, was one of the first ones, and I heard John Urban mention him last time. George Fawcett was a good friend of mine. He and I shared many conversations over his cancer as well, you know, I had cancer. He asked me to be his mentor. I did through these challenging times, but George was dear and talked about the veterans, and he cared about the veterans. I too care about you veterans, I know the sacrifice that you have given, and it does not go unrecognized. I want to tell you that Tom Cannon sacrificed the other my life, as long, as well as George, and given their life at home after they had served. A lot of you don't know, but a lot of you do know. I was honored to be the pastor to do George Fawcett's eulogy at my church. Several of you veterans came that we recognized. I was very dear to George and his family, visited his home many times after to comfort them. And veterans, I want you to know tonight that I have your full support, even though we might not add the name Veteran Memorial Park to Stumptown. But I want you to know, we will recognize you tonight in this order, and I thank you for your time. I heard Martha made a quote, but I want to quote something from the Bible. The Bible shared with us, "Do unto others as you would do unto yourself." And then it also says this, "You ought to love your neighbor as yourself." Those are one of the great commandments that Jesus left to all of us. And he asked us, "If you can't do anything else in keeping the commandment, get this one right. Love your neighbors as yourself." I've been in Matthews for thirty-three years, living here now. Gave a lot of my life, eleven years I patrolled the city and the roads here in Matthews on my service. While you slept, I was working and protecting. And I have served now on my six-year as a public servant in the Town of Matthews. Four years as commissioner, two years as planning. And I've done twenty-four years in public service as a pastor in this location, only Mount Moriah in the Crested area. I've given a lot of my time, and I love Matthews as much as anybody else. And I want you to know tonight, veterans, I don't want you to think that we don't care about you, I do care about you, and I know that this board does as well, too. Thank y'all for allowing me to speak at this time, thank you.
Commissioner McCool? I'd like to share some thoughts that I have on all of this as well. I have some notes written down, so I get all my thoughts. After carefully listening to both sides of this discussion, I believe the pocket park allows for us to recognize honor and celebrate our dear veterans. All while upholding the historic legacy and name of our park, Stumptown. I want to share one of my fondest memories with you. Growing up, I would spend a lot of time with my grandfather. He was a veteran and shared so many stories with me. So many of these stories come from his life when he served in the military. I can think of the countless stories that he talks when he was in North Africa, and shared to me how he was in a tent with his friends and would enjoy playing cards over a cup of coffee as they waited for their next assignment. Both of my grandfathers served, they have since passed. And I envision this pocket park as a place for a grandfather to take their grandchild, to tell stories and share their past experiences. This is an opportunity for meaningful connection and appreciation. I want this because I know both of my grandfather, how both my grandfathers would feel about this. And I know our veterans feel the same. I want to be very clear. I have promised that I would listen to all voices and make the best possible decision for everyone, and that's what I'm doing. This is a great opportunity for our town to work together. We are not changing the name of Stumptown Park. We are just creating a small area within Stumptown Park to honor our brave men and women. We aren't renaming the entire park because we have to remember our history. However, we have to remember the history of the people who ensured that we could keep our freedoms we hold dear. The brave men and women who serve this country deserve to know that their town supports them. They deserve a place to take their children and grandchildren. Freedom is not free, and we should all be reminded of that. So many members of our community here in Matthews have served this country and protected our right to have this debate freely and openly. This is a debate we are privileged to have, as so many around the world do not have that right. This isn't a debate for me. So many people have called Matthews home, gave up their time, their safety, and even their lives to ensure our freedoms. We cannot forget their sacrifice. By creating this pocket park, we can stand together with them and ensure that they know that their sacrifice is appreciated by all of us. This is a win-win for our entire town, that's why I will vote in favor of the pocket park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken, I do want to make one other comment. In the kind of heat of my speech, I failed to mention Mr. Corey King, our Parks Director, who also does a great job. Thank you, Corey, didn't mean to exclude you, I was getting kind of wrapped up in my speech there, and I forgot to mention you, but we certainly appreciate all you have done for many years for the town as well. Let me ask Mr. Buckley, is there a... I don't believe there is a desire to change the entire name of the park. Do we need to vote not to change it, or we just bypass that?
The board could just move on to item number two.
Let me repeat the question, is anybody in favor of renaming Stumptown Park to Stumptown Veterans Memorial Park? Okay, so we'll move on to the next item, which is C2, designate the Veterans Memorial Pocket Park within Stumptown Park. Who's going to take this, Corey or Hazen?
Yeah, I... Mayor, I would say it's somewhat explanatory. Many, a number of board members have already expressed this issue. We would create a pocket park within its own separate park within Stumptown Park. I think the key is the next one, though, which is how is that thing actually going to work, and how's it going to interface? You know, how's the Veterans Memorial going to interface with Stumptown Park and making sure that we can make it a win-win as much as possible for everyone?
Okay, so we're on to item C2, is there any discussion? Commissioner Urban?
Well, I mean, it all envelops everything we're talking about, I did like everybody else make a list of comments. I think in justification for the entire board, this board, like previous boards, have always been supportive of the veterans, and I think Larry has said it very eloquently about all of us, past, present, and then hopefully in the future, of support of the veterans. I know I've seen a lot of the board members at all the events when there are only a handful of people, and with Phil Mallory's leadership, we saw those events grow. And Commissioner Miller was one of the first commissioners, rightfully so, to come to the table and say, "We're not doing enough to help support them." That being said, I have just a list of things, I'm a little confused. The process seems back-asswards to me, okay? It's sort of like Pelosi, you know, passed the bill, and then you can read it. But we're talking about hiring a landscape architect after all that conversation takes place. So it seems... My biggest regret is that when we're talking about what was offered to us six months ago or eight months ago about refurbishing the monument, we probably should have took the will intention and paused. Paused in saying, "Maybe we need to evaluate this a little bit further." It was great that a citizen stepped up, including a legion, to want to fund the project, but were there going to be some unintended consequences? And we're here, we have the unintended consequences of it. We, as a board, know, and maybe not all citizens know, that Stumptown Park is in constant flux. Corey and his staff are constantly looking at how to utilize it better, how to work with the conditions that are there. And just a few things that could possibly change is the fact that maybe some more homes were bought by the town, and Stumptown Park continues to morph into something else, and that's fine. But at the same time, are we doing justice to what we're talking about on memorial or park at this stage in the game, not evaluating holistically what's going on? And I stood there the other day at the back of the park, meeting with Mr. Rose, and I'm thinking about the Exxon Station going, "Well, you know, we could actually have a nice, fine restaurant with a mixed-use building built on that corner, and the kitchen grease hood is on the back of the building, spewing whatever it spews back towards the memorial." So you've got to be careful what you wish for. You know, how are we going to address that in the future? Are there plans to look at how future growth takes that into play? I'm not so sure Stumptown Park is large enough to have a park within a park. We can debate that. But I don't, you know, I don't mind designating a plaza, a memorial, something of sufficiency, it's been there like that. I guess my question would be then, do we take personal halsey conversations off the table? Or is this an adjunct to personal halsey? I mean, have we talked about that? You know, years ago, we talked about a museum for veterans, and I don't think we had the traction in Matthews, and so they went to Min Hill. And again, I don't think that ever took traction again where personal halsey today has that potential. I've been listening to everybody talk about delineation, as if it means something. And I guess my question is, are you using the word delineation as creating a sense of place? Which is more important to me than the word delineation. And it doesn't necessarily mean fixed objects in space, columns. It can be, to all the artists on the board, Jeff, Merday, and all, it could be described as delineation from an overhead plane. It can be delineation from a surface level. Ralph Sketch, he delineated the memorial by holding the edge and doing different things. So there's a lot of different ways of delineating things, as opposed to what most people think are, you've got to put physical structures in the way, you've got to put, you know, permanent benches in the way and things of that nature, which I think someone has suggested some temporary benches, which may be a better solution. But again, you know, are we trying to create a sense of place? Is it temporary, or is it permanent? I think Larry Lester sent an interesting email, I'm not talking about the email he sent, but he sent a link. And it concerned me a little bit, and it was from the VA, about how you appropriately designate an assembly area for veterans. And I wondered, have we vetted, pardon the pun, have we vetted to the Legion and the Veterans Association as to exactly what are the real components that go into something like this? I know that a lot of the conversations are that you do not demote the flag. That's the central focus on some things, and frankly, we're talking about a lot of stuff, it begins to push the flag off to the corner. And I'm a little concerned about that, so I'm a little... I think a landscape architect that has a background in this might be able to shed some light on it. And so that kind of leads me back to my final discussion is, shouldn't we have hired, shouldn't we hire someone first to sort of evaluate what's going on here, as opposed to we, the laypeople, so to speak, talking about what is or what isn't a memorial, or what is a park? We seem to be, again, pardon the pun, we're firing the gun, and then we're going to take aim. So I am not in favor of just coming right out of the box and saying, naming it a park. It could be a plaza, it could be a memorial, it could be anything like that. But I would like to personally step back, hire that professional, let them work through the process, vetting the way they need to vet these things, and then coming back before the board and right, wrong, and indifferent, giving recommendations about where things need to fall out. Thank you for the long-winded one, but the mayor did it, so I could do it, too.
Appreciate those comments, Commissioner Urban. If I could respond to a couple of them. As I mentioned, when I stated my comments, we've waited a hundred-and-forty-two years to honor our veterans with an official space. Park, Plaza, Memorial, are we just talking semantics? I think park is the, you know, well-known designation for an area that would represent them. And we've beat this to death with months of hearings, et cetera. I think the veterans and many veterans' friends and families have spoken, they would like us to do this. And again, let me reiterate that any delineation, or whatever you want to call it, would absolutely take into effect the functionality of the park, and there's no idea that we're going to suddenly build a, you know, a six-foot wall between these two areas. It could be, as you say, it could be something very gentle and much less intrusive, so I just wanted to get those comments. Commissioner Miller, sorry, you got a comment?
Yeah, thank you. The memo on number two is not, I'm uncertain as to what we're voting on. For example, it says, "We're going to separate the two parks." And it would, I've heard six feet off the sidewalk, I've heard, it says four feet off the sidewalk. It could extend the entire length of the park. And again, we don't have a plan, we're voting on something... Um, and, and a, a, again, we don't have a plan. We're voting on something we don't have a plan for. Um, I agree, I agree with John Urban. I agree with Martha Kraus. Um, I would be able to compromise with, uh, I don't know if the term is a knee wall or a, a, a sitting bench uh, somewhere in the back, but it would be best, uh, if it hugged the sidewalk for mowing, for sitting during concerts, et cetera. Um, I, I respect and admire veterans, um, but we all know that Mr. Tofano is driving this project. Yet he has no position within the town. Let's remember for a minute how and when we first met Mr. Tofano. First, he wanted to tell the town how it or a landowner who owned the lot next to his home should utilize that lot next to his house. He bought signs and started a campaign. He wanted to save the village. That just shows that he knows nothing about this town as we're not a village. We've never been a village. At the time, he had only lived here for about five years and he bought that house for $115,000. After that, during that.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Miller, how, how was that relevant to what we're talking about? How much somebody paid for a house? I don't see the connection.
Okay, strike it. Then he brought in TV cameras and campaign ads and making accusations of influence peddling because of campaign contributions to the former mayor and some of the commissioners. I was not one of them. What I want to point out is there's a pattern here. Two items form a pattern. One, Mr. Tofano has a knack for telling others what they should do with their land, except he has no right to do so. It's like telling your neighbor to paint their house a different color. The second is influence peddling. He sponsored some of the people on this board. $3,500 to one, 785 to another. So there's a double standard. Every time he's involved with the town, there's a big division and a rift. We already have two veterans parks. Perser Halsey, both were veterans. There's a veterans area planned. Anything else could be taken there. Bulcom Park was named after a veteran. Stumptown is more of a fun-filled gathering area. Excuse me for a minute. Stumptown is more of a fun-filled gathering place for special events. We can barely fit people as it is. With fears of COVID and social distancing, this expansion would only take pace, space away from other events such as Positively Matthews, Arbor Day, Beach Fest and others. We've had improvements to the existing veterans area and they look beautiful. But if we put a wall around it, you won't be able to see those from the front of the park either. So I'm confused about that. I, I, I admire what's been done so far. I just don't feel that any expansion inward into the, uh, park is appropriate.
Thank you. Let me address a couple of your comments. Um, one that comes to mind immediately is just because a park is named after a veteran doesn't mean it's a veterans park. Secondly, I, I question the idea that there's a plan for a veterans something or other at Perser Halsey. It's literally a, a, a few bullet points on a one of our planning conferences. And I believe I'm the one that suggested it. There, there's no hard plan to, to build anything. It's not funded. Uh, there's no nothing there. It's just an idea that maybe someday we would do that. That's why I think it's too far off in the future. Um, thirdly, Mr. Tofano did donate to my campaign. Um, I, I reject that, uh, that he's, he's my puppet master and that I only do what Mr. Tofano says. Mr. Tofano is not the only person that has weighed in on this conversation. I've literally talked to hundreds of people in the town that are in favor of this that aren't named Mr. Mark Tofano. So I don't think that's a fair, to say that he is driving this is not a, not a fair, uh, assessment in my opinion. Are, are there any other, uh, comments? Commissioner McCool?
I just want to address too, me and Mark also donated to my campaign, so I feel like I should address this. You know, we heard multiple veterans speak tonight. Were any of them Mark Tofano? No. They were all veterans who felt like they had been rejected by some of the conversations we had been having. They wanted this. This isn't Mark Tofano. This isn't Mark Tofano pulling the puppet strings of the town of Matthews. This is veterans wanting to be heard. That's all it is. My vote has nothing to do with Mark Tofano. My vote has a lot to do with compromise and the thoughts of my grandfathers. That's where my vote comes from tonight. Not because someone is pulling the pocket strings or pulling the strings of my voice or my vote. This is for me, from no one else.
Mayor Pro Tem Gardner?
Since we're all sharing campaign confessionals, uh, you know, I, I believe, I bring it up in regular meetings that we need to be transparent um, and responsible for ourselves in the realm of public scrutiny. Uh, Mark Tofano did give to my campaign as well as more than 50 other people. Uh, I have spoken to him through email through the, for this project. All of that is on public record. But I haven't, you know, met with him. We haven't had any shady backroom dealings. He hasn't been pushing me to do one thing or another. Um, I, I'm not, we all just voted, did, by silence, uh, did not vote for what the American Legion asked for, which was to rename the park. Um, instead, you know, the, the original suggestion was to rename the park in total. The overwhelming public opinion, including 131 veterans from Matthews Glen, was that the park should be renamed, but out of honor of the legacy of Stumptown Festival. That didn't seem appropriate. Um, what did change my mind, I was neutral about whether it should be a pocket park or not. Excuse me, but what did change my mind was somebody in the community who I respect a lot sent me a message and said that her husband served in Vietnam and they were married 25 years before he shared his experience with her. I cannot imagine the trauma and the experience of going to battle, seeing your friends die, having their blood on your hands, being exposed to chemical warfare and coming back to the US, getting off a plane and being spit on, egged, as Stephen Wilfong said, um, or even as Tom McEag with Matthews Glen said, he's disabled from Agent Orange, serving in Vietnam. I can't imagine coming back to the US and having such 200 people arguing back and forth simply because of personal vitriol. It's time to put that aside and listen to honesty and what this is really about. Can we give them one iota of, of, of peace and healing when they walk into Stumptown Park by being honored? They weren't given that when they came back from serving in battle. They weren't. And all it takes is one vote for us to say, yes, we do honor you and we respect you. All of these other things are minutia. We can talk about, you know, having a proper park at Perser Halsey when the money is there. But right now we have people who are at the end of their lives, who are suffering from chemical warfare and just want a simple vote to be honored. What a simple thing. It's not personal. It's not vitriol. It is not some sort of long-held grudge. It's a park. And it's a way to be kind to our neighbors and to love one another as we love ourselves, as Larry Whitley said. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get so carried away, but you know, that's, it's, it's meaningful and it's a simple act.
Want to be clear, I, I've really struggled with this and I, as I shared with, uh, Mayor Bailey. And I, I said, we're trying to thread a needle here. I'm trying to do something that'll compromise. It can be a win-win situation for everybody. There was a a vocal minority that said, no way, we cannot rename the park. And we're trying to honor that request. Okay, well, let's do something different. This is such a simple, small thing. It's not going to destroy Stumptown Park, doesn't take away from it. We'll be very careful with any delineation. And, and Commissioner Miller, you asked a question that's a good one, and that's what are we voting on? Uh, I, I believe the line of demarcation, if, so to speak, is approximately four feet behind the sidewalk. If, if this, uh, landscape architect says it's better, as you suggest, Commissioner Miller, to maybe if there's a, a bench or something, put it all the way up on the sidewalk. We could certainly do that. And actually, the veterans group are okay with that. So that's, you know, maybe a not to exceed four feet from the sidewalk. That sliver of the park from there, uh, to, to the end of the park on the north side is what we're talking about. Uh, Commissioner Whitley, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you. I've listened to every one of the commissioners. Uh, I want to say, uh, uh, Mark Tofano did not give me any money for my campaign. In fact, he didn't accept a whole lot from anybody. And so, but I do recognize people when they want to make something better. Now, I'm a believer that you all, well, always ought to make it better than it was when it was there. Mark Tofano led the charge, did not charge anybody, put sweat and tears along with volunteer and money that people donated to make this better on there it is now. And I, I commend him for that. I've now been to a lot of the memorial services out there and it's much better. I'm honored to see that. And I'm honored to see that bricks can be sold to represent a family member. And with that being said, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. And the motion is to designate the Veteran Memorial Pocket Park within the Stumptown Park. Also, I know number three is talking about engaging the Land State Architect Design. But also give the architect design to bring back something to us after we vote on this and then bring it back to the board for us to clarify it. I know I'm just talking about that, but my motion is to, is to designate a Veteran Memorial Pocket Park within Stumptown Park.
Back end.
Oh. Uh, Mr. Blodgett, do you have a comment? You have a concerned look on your face. Oh, you're good? Okay.
Yes, sir.
You're, you're good?
But, yeah.
Commissioner Miller?
Do we know what we're voting on yet other than a name of a, of an area?
Yes, it would be, it would go along the, or go along adjacent to the sidewalk, no, no farther than four feet behind the sidewalk and include the entire section, um, north. Uh, Hazen, do we have that, uh, map?
Yeah. Uh, Jay, you still driving? So what, what I would say, Commissioner Miller, is uh, that is, this to me would be a starting point. So if the board voted in favor of this, this would be the starting point. And I'm assuming, uh, number three would be voted on as well. And that line could change really significantly on how, you know, how, what's the best design? I think, uh, Commissioner Urban mentioned a sense of place, right? This architect should make sure there's a sense of place created for both e- entities. And then I think Commissioner Urban also mentioned, uh, there may be some politic, politic, I mean, military protocols. We need to make sure the architect is aware of as well. So, um, I, the only thing I would advise the board, that is a lot, the line, but that line is subject to change after we get a report back from the landscape architect.
Less or more, Hazen, right?
Yes, sir.
Less or more, not more into the park, but it could go back a little bit less, but at the same time. I see the little circle down there and that's the flagpole. And certainly that's, that's to be commendable in any memorial park is down in a little circle at the end of the sidewalk there. I think that's the flagpole. Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Um, I, I believe there exists a sitting area around the flagpole already. But what I would, um, if, if this gets approved, I would like to make a, a strong suggestion that any sitting wall have a few breaks in it. Um, because we often run electrical cables to tents and events that come from the peripheral of the park. And you don't want them going over, uh, knee walls or benches or anything like that.
Absolutely. And I, I want to again say that this will come back. I, I, I fully expect to get input from Corey, from, from Lee Anne Moore, uh, from all our advisory committees, and it'll come back to our board to vote on. And it may not even be a sitting wall. That may not be what we end, ultimately end up doing, but whatever it is, we want it to be, um, user-friendly for all the things that we do in the park. Um, absolutely. And I, I, I would not personally vote for anything that was not user-friendly or that did not, that was create, created an undue hindrance to, uh, to our festivals and things like that. Uh, Commissioner Urban?
I, I, I still, I mean, I'll get shot down, but I'd like to offer up a, a, an alternate, uh, amendment or a, a, a separate motion is that we defer the pocket park renaming. Get the landscape architect onboard to know what the scope of work really is and to see where this outlet is. I, I just don't, the building is built and now we're working backwards to hire the design team. Um, I'm a little concerned by that. I mean, maybe he comes back and says, we don't need to be cited here. We need to be in another location. But, but more importantly, I, you've already mentioned it, Mayor, is working with Corey and Leanne and Parks Rec to really vet this thing um, from, from that standpoint. And so I'm just, I'm just extremely concerned by that. And it just seems backwards to me not to get the landscape architect onboard, delineate how things need to be delineated, create that sense of place, get every, get a win-win going here. Cause I'll be real, I, you know, Hazen's always said, I'm a consensus builder. Um, getting, I, I've seen the divisiveness between Park and Rec and and, and the Legion and vice versa, whatever, getting everybody onboard is sinclair, moving the boat forward. So I'm going to offer up an alternate uh, substitute, substitute motion, um, to defer the naming of the park and jump right to the hiring of the landscape architect.
I'll say.
Commissioner McCool? I want to clarify something, Commissioner Urban. You said, we don't want to build something, build something, build a building and then go back. We explicitly said on multiple occasions that nothing's going to be built. We're just delineating a spot. It's not like we're building the bench then we're, then we're
Well, and maybe that's a bad, maybe that's a bad analogy, but basic, basically, um, we're, we're saying, we're done. We're working backwards. We're going to go ahead and name a, uh, a, a park within a park without having someone properly vet the terms of what the nature of this is, what the memorial is ultimately going to be integrated with, kind of to Hazen's part, how the lay of the land works, et cetera, et cetera. And so in my opinion, we're working backwards. That's all I'm saying.
Hey, we have, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Gardner?
Just, I just wanted to respond to that for a second. Um, what we are doing is saying is naming this space as a park and then asking the landscape architect if it can be delineated in a visual way. So they may come back and say no. And, and then that will be the end of it, right? Like, we aren't saying they have to do something. We're saying how can this be managed in an aesthetic way that makes sense? And, and then if they come back with something, and I think any skilled landscape architect would be able to handle this with ease. Uh, they'll come back. It'll go through the, um, the courses through Parks and Rec and through the advisory committees. And then they'll tweak it and make it something that we're all proud of. But the structure's in place. The structure was in place when Stumptown Park was built. The structure will change when Stumptown Park is expanded. Um, this is just, you know, one stop along the building of, um, of a memorial for veterans.
But if you have a landscape architect comes back and says, guys, you're buying all this additional land and doing some things. I've looked at the orientation of the solar powers, et cetera, et cetera. And with this simple realignment of shifting things or moving things around, he, she, it, whatever, can come up with a much better scheme that makes everybody extremely happy. It also takes in a It also takes in light of the what ifs with the Exxon, for example. I think everybody would be more pleased that it was thoroughly vetted and not just sort of haphazardly, oh, we're defined right here. We've got to work within these boundaries. Because like everything, there's always multiple solutions. And that's all I'm asking at this stage in the game. I hear everybody from this aspect of it. I'm just trying to find some local consensus. And it just, in my mind, it just seems to be, if you're saying, well, it's got to be right here in this boundary, and that's it, I think we're also locking ourselves in to what could be a very successful solution. So I'm just one of seven. It's okay.
If I could comment to that, a couple of things. First, we're not locked into anything. We're the town board. We could alter this. We could change it to accommodate a minor modification in the future. Secondly, I don't think the idea that maybe someday they'll build something in Exxon, so we need to not do this. How long do you want to wait? I mean, we don't have no idea what's going to be built there. It may be 30 years before something's built there. I hope not, but we have no idea what's going to be built there. So I don't know how you could plan for an unknown, total unknown. We have no idea what will be built there.
Well, but you take that into account. You sit there and realize that there might be something there. And so we need to properly screen it. You know, and in doing so, it changes the dynamic of how things are dealt with. I'm just saying, it's just the designer aspect of me coming out from that standpoint.
Fair enough. I believe we have a motion, a separate alternative motion from Commissioner Urban. And Commissioner Miller, do you second that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the Commissioner Urban, can you repeat your motion, please, sir?
Well, the motion to defer the right out, sort of designating and naming of this pocket park within the larger park, and immediately move to engage the landscape architect.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Urban, a second from Commissioner Miller. I will take a roll call vote. Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitley?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
No.
Commissioner McCool?
No.
And I vote no as well, so that fails four to two. We'll go back to the original motion, which was to designate the pocket park within Stomp Town Park to be called Matthews Veterans Memorial Park. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Miller?
Apparently, it's already official.
How do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
In light of the fact that my motion failed, I mean, I think it's admirable. Hopefully, the landscape architect will bring this together, so I will vote yes.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Whitley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCool?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. I'd like to thank this board, particularly Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Urban, who had some reservations, but at the end, you were able to compromise, and we appreciate that.
We need to move on to item 10C3, engage the landscape architect to design Veterans Memorial Pocket Park delineations. And can that be perhaps, to Commissioner Urban's comments, can that be perhaps reworded? Is there a better way to say delineations? Either Commissioner Urban or Mayor Pro Tem Garner, do you have ideas on that? Well, I think, I think if you're going to hire a professional, you might as well step back a little bit and let them evaluate the big picture. They're going to want to create a sense of place. And my biggest concern is the active versus the passive and what takes place there. But I'm hoping that through dialogue with Parks and Rec, Corey's staff, and the Legion, maybe you get Renee and Jeff to be on a subcommittee with them or something like that to talk from the artistic side. You can work through this, but you don't want to myopically put this designer in a box right out, right out of the get-go. You want to give him the options, let him flush these things out to make it work. You know, I think this will all end peacefully from that standpoint, but I don't want to cut this so quickly. And in the same vein is that if this ever comes about again, right, wrong, or indifferent, if Jeff Miller wants to cut a check to fund Pershaw Holsey Park, it doesn't mean he can do whatever he wants, so to speak. I think the town needs to step in with the professionals, bring the committees together to work diligently at it. And that's my only misgiving of kind of letting this horse out of the barn. We created some unintended consequences. And we'll get through this, but I think it's word of warning. We learned, we learned a really big lesson here. No matter how grateful we are to Mr. Tofano for doing what he did and the Legion we did, there still has to be some protocol and safeguards in how we affect the town's property.
Mr. Mayor, may I help you with that motion?
Yes, please.
Just to have the board vote on engage the landscape architect to design Veterans Memorial Park now that you've already named the park, have them just simply design the park. Don't use the word delineate.
But suggest they design.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, my fellow commissioners. I think we, I agree with John. If you're going to hire somebody to design it, you always tell them what you're looking for. Then let them go and come back and bring it to us. And I think that'll be the best way. Because we don't tell them what we want. And the veteran's concern with Corey and all of the people are concerned to make sure it's the very best. And I believe in having the best in whatever we do and anything we do. And I concur. And that being said, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion. And I I'd like to make a motion that we engage a land state architect to design the Veterans Memorial Pocket Park.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
No second.
Okay, thank you. As a friendly amendment, and I've discussed this with a couple of commissioners, can we have, can we designate in this, within this motion to have a town employee, and I'm thinking Corey, Mr. King, be the key point person with this so that we, you know, the town is keeping an eye on it. I don't know how, Mayor Pro Tem Garner, you may want to help me with the wording on that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, in I was saying, we were saying that we wanted to tell them what we want. And certainly, parks got to come in part of that as well. And when we get a designer, then Corey and all of the team can tell them what we want to see in this park. And then let them do and bring something back to them.
Yeah, I think to alleviate some some fear, some perhaps justified fears that we're going to, you know, run off and do something inappropriate. I want to make sure that that Mr. King and Parks and Rec and Howie Ladner and all those people have their, are working a lot together. Mr. Garner, do you have a comment?
I just was going to say that, you know, having a point person will be important so that wires don't get crossed. So in my mind, if Corey is up for the task, including him as being that person who can explain the needs of the park and the uses of the park, the landscape architect would certainly be interested in that.
And certainly, MVAC would be involved as well, in addition to Parks and Rec, to get their perspective on what's appropriate for this. I think, Commissioner Miller?
Since I'm on a roll tonight of offending people, I'd like, I'd like to add LeAnn Moore in there because she's our event coordinator, right? She knows the layout, et cetera.
Sure.
And I would like to make a point that the current chair of MVAC has only lived here during a year when we haven't had a single concert in the park. We haven't had a single big event in the park due to COVID. And I would just ask that we have people with experience steering the ship.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
I think to respond to that, let me gather my thoughts for a second. You know, one of my friends says nobody has the right to own Matthew, to love Matthews the most. And I think that also speaks for how long you've lived here. And to jump right in and be the chair of MVAC shows an amount of respect and appreciation for Matthews. I think coming from MVAC, as the chair, his role will be to represent veterans more than it will be to give direction for the park use. So whether he's seen concerts or not, he will be able to say, you know, veterans, you know, this percentage of veterans have a difficult time getting around an unstable ground. Or veterans may need a place to sit, but he's not there to direct aesthetics or to direct use as far as concerts. That's where somebody like Corey or LeAnn would come in.
I agree with you.
And without getting too many chefs in the kitchen for you, Mr. Miller, I think that there needs to be one point, one staff person that really takes all of the thoughts and the direction and gives that to the landscape architect because I cannot tell you, I must have talked to 75 people this week and gotten input, 75 different levels of input about what we should do in this park. And it is complicated, and we need to make it as simple as possible.
Mr. King, you had a comment, sir?
Yeah, just as, you know, as Hazen and I were talking about, you know, the information in the memo, I think the intent was for staff to lead, or be that liaison with the landscape architect. And typically, what they'll do, just with most of our projects, is we'll lay out what level of public input we're going to, I guess, engage in. And that's how they're going to form their price, you know, to charge us. And so it really will be, whether it's, you know, three meetings, two meetings, however many meetings necessary to get the input from MVAC, Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, certainly from staff, you know, whatever level the board wants to, you know, give their input before this product is brought back to the board. There will be that engagement from all the stakeholders.
Fantastic. And that's what we want. And we don't want the, even the perception that somebody's running the end game around, you know, we want all this to go through town staff, be fully vetted, and get your recommendation, Corey, having talked to all the professional staff that we have within the town, and also considering the advice from our advisory committee, so. So again, we have this item, engage a landscape architect to design Veterans Memorial Pocket Park. Did we have a motion? I forgot.
I did.
And did we have a second?
Renee did.
Okay, so we have a, do we want to discuss, put a dollar figure in this, Mr. Town Manager?
So, Mr. Mayor, the fourth item is to, if you have a engineering or architectural project less than $50,000, you don't have to go through an extensive time-consuming request for qualifications. So I don't have a lot of experience.
It would be less than $50,000 oversight.
I, yes, but Corey, Corey nailed it. Public input is time-consuming. It's democracy, but it's time-consuming. And the meter's running. So we, I think we're going to have to figure out that balance of good, healthy public input and being efficient with architects' time. But we envision it being less than $50,000, yes.
Commissioner Urban?
And there are things that can be done on the scope. We've talked about this before. We don't have to have the principal of the firm, his project manager, and the job captain all come to a stakeholders' meeting when I know Corey and staff can take copious notes and digest the information just as well. So, I mean, everybody likes to bring everybody to the party and run up those billable hours, but we need to be cognizant of that because that just helps keep things in line.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McCool, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something. I guess this is a question for Hazen. This is expected to be less than $50,000, correct? And I guess a follow-up question, this is for Charlie. Could this be a tourism fund bucket item, or is, again, that's why I'm asking?
Yes.
It would certainly be a draw. It would be of itself a destination.
That was kind of my thought. That's
Mr. McCool's getting the hang of this, because one of us asked that question on just about everything that we have to expend funds for.
But I didn't have my ring on.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. Based on the next item, it's not to exceed $50,000. So we have a motion by Commissioner Whitley, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Garner to engage a landscape architect to design Veterans Memorial Pocket Park. I guess we're going to leave the word delineations, but know that that can mean a whole lot of things. We just want to design.
I left it off, Mayor. I left it on.
Okay, you just said to design it, right? Okay, good. So we'll take the vote finally. Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCool?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And so finally, on this item, we'll go to de-approve exemption from qualification-based selection process for design work for Veterans Memorial Pocket Park. And then that word we don't like. Hazen, can you explain again the need for this? I know we have the memo, but.
Yes, sir. The the general statute allows for, in the case of small engineering and architectural projects that you don't have to go through, you can ask for price. Otherwise, if it's over $50,000, you cannot ask for price. You go with the most responsive bidder, and then you got to haggle over price. I think this is, using this exemption, being under $50,000 is a much more efficient way to do it and more effective using taxpayer dollars as well, because then you can say, what's your prices? You can get a price as part of your initial
The statute requires that you put that in writing to claim that exemption.
But the board has to approve the resolution.
Yeah.
Commissioner Miller? I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution to exempt the procurement of design services for the Veterans Memorial Pocket Park from the statute 143-6431.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Miller, a second from Commissioner Whitley. We'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitley?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCool?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We got through that. I want to thank everyone again for working together. This board's done a great job of usually coming to a consensus, and I really appreciate it. This has been a very difficult discussion and a very stressful situation for many, many months, for me and probably many of you. A lot of people that I respect are on both sides of this consideration. And I think we've come up with, I think it's a reasonable compromise. We have not renamed the entire park. We have a very small piece that we're going to call the Matthews Veterans Memorial Park. I think it's a win-win situation. Let's make sure that any future design is very thoughtful and does not impinge the purpose that we use the park for these large events. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. I just have a brief question. The $50,000 or less, is that for design services only?
Yes. So what we would do is bring back to the board, once we feel like we've negotiated with the lowest responsive bidder, bring back the board for final approval, simply because the scope of service is going to be really important. And I think you guys have, the board needs to see, okay, here's the number of public meetings we think we're going to need so that, because this is a contentious issue. We want to be very careful and have the board bought in from the get-go.
Yeah, and just a final comment. One thing that I've heard from a lot of our constituents is they would like someplace in that area to sit down, additional space. I know we have some benches and things, so hopefully, we can find something that doesn't, you know, impinge on the ability to do these large-scale events, but will allow people to sit down. Again, when we talk about the ages of many of our veterans, they're getting up there and, you know, I'm not that old, but I got gray hair. I like to place a sit-down occasionally myself, so maybe we can consider that. Again, thank you so much. This was a, this was a difficult one. And I'm really proud of our board for coming together. We had some good spirited debate, but we came together. I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Move on to 11A, receive monthly budget report from Ms. Becky Clark, just to come in.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. So have for you tonight the budget report as of the end of February. um, the budget report as of the end of February, so that puts us eight months through our current fiscal year. And um, overall, we continue to have solid news. So um, just like last month, we are tracking a little bit behind in our ad valorem tax collection rate, but we do still feel confident that by the end of the year, um, that we'll just come in probably a hair under what we expected. Um, but we will be able to make up any deficits there through some other revenue lines that are doing well, or um, some cost savings in some of our departments. One area that is doing better than expected is our local sales tax collection rates. Uh, we are a couple percentage points ahead of where we were this time last year, so that is good news. Um, and our unrestricted intergovernmental revenues continue to hold steady about where we would expect them to be at this point. Uh, recreation revenues are understandably down. We fully expect that that is unfortunately going to continue for a while, but there is the continued corresponding decrease in expenditures to offset uh, those revenue losses. Tourism revenue collection rate, speaking of tourism funds, uh, we are at um, about forty-four point six percent of budget. So um, while that is slightly ahead of last year's budget, as um, as far as a budget collection percentage is concerned, it is a a small decline in the actual dollars collected. This is gonna largely be due to decreased occupancy tax and prepared food and beverage tax revenues, which we have fully expected as a result of the pandemic. Uh, but again, we are also seeing a corresponding decrease in expenditures that is more than making up for those losses in revenues. Investment earnings, of course, that's basically a loss for the year. Uh, we're only going to receive a couple thousand dollars there as interest rates are basically zero, and we continue to have no concerns with our departmental expenditures as we start winding down towards the end of our fiscal year. So happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, we will continue to monitor. And if we see any red flags, we'll certainly be happy to report that as soon as we have it.
Commissioner Urban?
Becky does a commendable job, and she wears a lot of hats. And I'm sure she doesn't want to be finance director. So can anybody tell me when we might have a finance director?
I would be happy to update you with that. So um, we uh, we have an accepted conditional offer from a very uh, qualified candidate as of last week. They are currently undergoing the background check and will then give notice to their current employer, um, presuming that all goes well with that. So we are uh, looking forward early May, um, hoping for May one, but it may be slightly before that. Um, but good news appears to be on the horizon. Uh, and we are very excited. Uh, I think they will be a tremendous asset to the town based on everything that we've seen so far.
Thank you. I just have a comment. I I I think Matthews is is truly blessed because Mayor Pro Tim Garner and I sit in on the Metro Mayor's calls and often hear, you know, horror stories of some of our, I've mentioned this in the past, some of our friends, particularly down east that are really struggling. There's a few towns that are considering filing for bankruptcy um, during this difficult time. So we're really blessed to to not be in, to actually be in pretty good condition uh, overall. So that's great news. Um, fantastic. Any other questions or comments about our our budget? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. I discussed this um with uh, Assistant Town Manager Becky Clark earlier about uh, the short-term licensing occupancy agreement with Terreloam. And I I had quite a few questions, and so she agreed to have uh, one of the principals, Jonathan Musley, to come explain to us what this is all about. So Becky, do you want to start off and then maybe?
Sure. Yep, happy to start over, and then I'll have Jonathan take over, um, and then we'll switch back to me. So, um, again, Mayor, members of the board, thank you for your time. Uh, so um, I have before you tonight, um, a rather unique proposal. And so a little bit of backstory is in the memo, but I was contacted by the Economic Development Office from Mecklenburg County, who did us with Terreloam, uh, a local business that was looking for a locality to continue to partner with as they build out their business. Um, so we have had a number of conversations as staff with uh, learn more about their product and their business model and kind of how um, how that might fit in with Matthews. And um, so I thought it would be a good idea to invite uh, Jonathan Mustache. Uh, he is one of the co-owners of Terreloam to provide some more information about their product, um, and what they are hoping to do with Matthews. Once we're done with that, I can get a little bit more into the details of the proposed agreement in front of you this evening. So Jonathan, I will uh, turn it over to you. He's got just a couple of slides. Um, I I warned him that this was gonna be a a longer meeting. Um, so um, so he is prepared uh, to keep it fairly brief. Um, so Jonathan, take it away.
Thank you, Becky, uh, for the introduction, and Mayor Higdon and board, thank you for having me uh, tonight. Um, just a quick little background of our company. Our company is named Terreloam. Uh, that's basically what we're trying to do is take the, so last year during COVID, my previous position was uh, making custom clothing. Um, so I had about twenty years in textiles. And we responded to the uh, need for P P E by helping local hospitals secure isolation gowns, mainly plastic. Um, I do, like yourself, Mr. uh, Mayor Higdon, have a love of gardening. And so one day I sent, sat out in my yard and noticed how the droplets were not penetrating uh, broccoli leaves. So it got me the idea to look into a natural uh, fiber to create isolation gowns. We ended up partnering with a company through the help of N C State um, to develop a plastic-like material that is a hundred percent natural and a hundred percent compostable. Um, that actually passes all the stringent tests for hospital gowns. Um, that's what we call bio-gowns. So I'm gonna share my screen really quickly with you guys. Um, right here. And just a quick, what it is, is a natural fiber, and it will completely disintegrate um within ninety days of just disposing of the gown. Um, what we are proposing to do is we want to collect all of our material that we waste when we cut the actual gown, so those come off the factory lines. And we are in talks currently to uh, collect non, um, I guess, how do you, non, um, my God, I'm blanking here. Non, uh,
Soiled?
Soiled gowns from Atrium and Novant, who we're providing the gowns to. Um, so during normal use at a hospital, about ninety percent of the gowns have nothing on them. There's about ten percent of the gowns have some soil, some sort of uh, pathogen or blood or something spilled on them. Those are required by the state to be incinerated. So we will never see those gowns. Those will not be brought to the site. Um, but what we're proposing to do is bring the unused gowns and our scraps to the site to compost the gowns and turn them into uh, usable compost for the city. In addition, we're gonna try to grow flowers and other eventually vegetables to either donate to the city or donate to the farmers markets uh, in the area. Um, the main part of this is we want to help beautify the town of Matthews, and it's like, thank you for helping us kind of prove our concept. Um, part of the the process that we're gonna go through is we're gonna do an initial composting, uh, have the compost and flowers that we grow sent to N C State for testing to make sure there's no pathogens or any kind of remnants left over of the gown. Once that's confirmed by M C, N C State, we can then start to donate the flowers to these, to the Matthews. Um, with the composting and the hot composting that we're doing, the first round should be done within two months that we could have the testing done. So given the temperatures of North Carolina, we should have a round of flowers that we can donate by the middle to the end of summer to the town. Um, one of the things I mentioned to Becky is on the corner of the lot that we are hoping to use, we want to set up a free flower stand for people to kind of walk by and pick up flowers on their way home or do whatever with. And then we could also, I've been going through some of that earlier parts of the board meeting, I could work with Ralph um, and do some of the the beautification around the city that he was talking about with adding compost and mulching and other items um, around the city. So I know you guys have probably a lot of questions that I'm happy to answer. Um, so if you guys want, Becky, you can explain a little bit more.
Yeah, sure, happy to. So um, so in our talks with Jonathan, um, and in getting set up um, through Mecklenburg County, um, Terreloam as um, kind of the proof of concept for this arm of their business, they were looking to partner with a community for a little bit of um, unused land that we might have uh, to be able to set up this composting operation. So um, I've really looked at it as um, if we were to have an incubator space or a co-op space for a a small business that was getting started. Um, this is really kind of the equivalent without the infrastructure and the roof that you would typically have in that kind of a setup. Um, and so, um, you know, what we're we're certainly hoping for with Terreloam is long-term partnership, um, and then I'm looking to invest in our community as their business grows and expands. So um, in looking at various parcels around the town, uh, we landed on the future park property that is at McKee and Pleasant Plains. So um, we met out there with a number of staff members and walked the site. And um, there is um, quite a bit of unused space out there, uh, but certainly nothing that interferes with current operations at that location, and it's clear of the Duke transmission lines that we have to avoid. Um, that uh, what Terreloam is looking for is a twelve-month uh, short-term lease that um, would allow them to set up, uh, I believe, four rows of composting. And um, they would monitor it uh, with N C State. And again, this is, this is not biohazardous. This is not medical waste. Um, these are, these are not gowns with anything like that on there, um, but to make sure that they're breaking down as uh, uh, one of the legs of the life cycle of their business. Um, and then presuming that that takes off in some of the other um uh, business opportunities that Terreloam is currently finalizing, um, in fairly short order, it sounds like they will be looking to bring their manufacturing facilities um, completely in-house and be building outs, and they will be looking for a permanent home. Um, so we understand that there's no guarantees. Um, but that, um, you know, Matthews would be an attractive location for them to at least uh, begin their search as they continue to grow as a business. Um, so in talking with our town attorney, the best way to move forward if the board is interested in this is what's called a short-term um, occupancy lease agreement. That would be for a twelve-month duration of time. Terreloam has committed that they will make no money off of this site. Um, uh, everything will either have no, no profit whatsoever, or they will be donating any materials that come off of the site. Um, and I think the technical qualification is um, for scientific research purposes, is the purpose um, that we have before us. So um, it's a lot to take in, and we understand that. So um, I know we're kind of maybe throwing, throwing this at you a little cold, so um, it is kind of late in the evening, and I know folks are tired. So if there's a lot of questions, um, one of the options in front of you is to um, opt for a five-thirty if you would like to continue to learn more, um, or if you have a lot of questions. Um, but otherwise, would certainly be open to answering what we can now. Um, and if the board is comfortable, would be of course, happy to entertain a motion.
I do have a a comment and a question. My comment, I'm sorry, go ahead, Charlie.
I just want to point out, it's not a lease but a licensing and occupancy agreement.
Excuse me. Thank you, Charlie.
Licensing and leasing, and so this doesn't come under the leasing statute.
So my my comment was, as I, as I was discussing this with Becky, I was like, I don't think we want to do this. And then she mentioned the partnership with N C State, the greatest university on earth. I said, yeah, maybe we, this is something I do. In all seriousness, the the concern that I had immediately is I don't think um, our neighbors or anybody would want medical waste stored anywhere near where people live or might go. So you've you've said that this will not be uh, medical waste, but who who determines that if it's soiled or not? How is that process gonna happen?
So that's that's done at the hospital, and that is, it has to be done a certain way. So as soon as there's any kind of uh, spillage onto the gown, it has to automatically go into the medical waste. So it it never is even even in my hands. And in talking with Novant and with um, Atrium, realistically, the earliest will actually get some gowns from them because of the current pandemic, because we have to implement a system into their hospitals. It's probably gonna be August, so the, and most of the gown, ninety-nine percent of the gowns that we're gonna get are just gonna be the scraps from our manufacturing in Wade's Borough.
And is the procedure in a hospital that the doctor or nurse or whoever would change their gown with every patient, or?
Yeah, so that's, yeah, they they rotate about ten gowns a day uh, per doc. I mean, every time you see a hot, you see a patient, you have to rotate.
And so if if that were plastic, that's a huge uh, stream of uh, stuff going to landfill for sure.
So in each each year in the U S, we fill eighteen Empire State buildings uh, worth of plastic gowns in the landfill. In North Carolina alone, it's about one and a half. And during COVID, you can almost triple that number um, because of the gown, the use of gowns that we've done. So we're we're taking a rather large portion of the landfill um, out of, out of the landfill rotation. And in addition, by planting into the compost, we're actually sequestering almost uh, the same amount of gowns that we're producing. Um, so the eventually, we're gonna use corn and other materials. They're pulling nitrogen or carbon out of the air and converting into nitrogen in the ground.
And what would your site at uh, McKee Road, what would it look like? Is it just gonna be rows of compost? Is that what it would?
Yeah, we're gonna do four, four rows of compost.
It would just be like, look like four rows of dirt, dirt?
Pretty much, yeah. I don't know if you've ever been to the.
Soil, I should say, not dirt.
Yeah, I don't know if you've ever been to the uh, the compost center up in um, like on Roswell's Ferry. Uh, they just have the same, the rows set up. That's exactly how we do it.
And how big would they be?
Um, oh, no more, probably, I mean, no more than three feet. Three or four feet, not as big as up there. That's that's a bigger scale operation.
I'll stop hogging the microphone here. Who else has a question or comment? Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Garner?
I think you just answered most of my questions, but how long are these rows gonna be?
Um, Becky, what was the length that we had kind of?
Yeah, we, we, uh, we walked it with Life It's um, the entire area is less than an acre, um, that they, I think that the acre is generous for what you would need. Um, they had um, kind of walked it and and eyeballed it. They didn't put any stakes in the ground, but they kind of eyeballed it. Um, a couple hundred feet max um, was the entire length that they would need. Um, and it's, it's set very, uh, quite far back from the road, so um, they, there's some uh, truck access that they would be able to get back there um, to do what they needed to on the site.
And what are you using for your greens?
Uh, I'm gonna, so part of the thing is, uh, if we partner with you guys, we're gonna go to some local restaurants in Matthews around the area and partner with them to get their food scraps.
Uh, I mean, that, I think as a board, that would be a concern for us, since even the county doesn't do food scrap composting right now, from what I'm aware of. They did at one point, and then there were rodent issues. And so I think we would definitely want to be careful of that. Um, if it's possible to get greens from other source, like yard waste, then uh, I think that would be preferable. Uh, and and then the machinery that you're gonna use to turn the compost rows?
Just by hand. They're they're not very big, so it's not, that's why it's not a huge amount of material that we're gonna need. So it's just a by-hand uh, operation.
That's intense.
Functional fitness, as I like to call it.
Yeah, you might need some composting volunteers.
Oh, yeah, we we have, we have a bunch lined up.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah.
But I think this is great, and um, somebody who is self-identifies as crunchy feely, I'm all up in this, super excited.
Hazen, do you have a comment, sir?
Uh, yes, sir. And part of this license, sure, we have a thirty-day deal. So the board has, if you went into this, the board would have the opportunity, like, for whatever reason, to cut the cord after thirty days.
Well, I I think it's a, uh, a share of Mayor Pro Tim Garner's excitement. I didn't initially because I was concerned about medical waste, but um, uh, it it's a great uh, great to have biodegradable material in that sphere. Uh, I I think some folks have just it's a great, great to have biodegradable material in that sphere. I, I think some folks have just come up with the little Keurig cups for coffee that are biodegradable, thank goodness, because I think there's like, you know, hundreds of millions of those you use a day. Commissioner Urban, do you have a comment?
You know, what's the testing protocol for, you know, runoff and things of that nature and testing the soils as you're composting?
So that's one of the things I do have to work with on the, on the runoff part of it. We're going to try to collect, because I know that the site slants a little bit towards the left. So we're going to have like a collection zone on the end to make sure there isn't any runoff on that side. But anything, we're going to have basically the more, we're going to have the higher, higher amounts on the higher side that it goes down the rows and the more compost and material at the end. So that will that will collect most of the runoff from the higher rows. So it'll basically stop on the last row. It's the lowest on the field.
But, but is there any testing going to be done, meaning a physical soil sample taken as the process moves forward to see if there's any, anything in it?
Yeah. So every, everything, we're going to test each phase of the cycle with, in partnership with NC State. So they're going to walk us through it each step of the way to make sure that everything goes according to plan and is tested appropriately.
I imagine there's a ton of microorganisms in there eating and digesting all that stuff.
Yeah, a lot. Hopefully, we're, we're hoping it's all the good stuff. So that's what we're really banking on.
Commissioner Urban, do you have another question?
No, I think that's fine. I guess my only one would be, you know, is this location in any predetermined pathways, greenways, walkways, multi-use paths? Is it, is it possible that, you know, groups of people may go by here in some form or fashion? And if that was the case, do we have a plan B to fence off this location?
So it is only accessible through towns locked gates. And so it's really in the middle of that 20-acre parcel, somewhat adjacent to the Duke transmission lines, but set back. Corey walked it with me. I mean, it's many hundreds of feet back off the road. So it's, it's not something that a member of the public could walk up on the actual composting in process. So there's, there's no way to get to it unless you're hopping fences and being, being where you shouldn't be.
So this is our area of 51 men?
It is. Yeah. It's completely controlled by the town.
Is the fence along Pleasant Plains still barbed wire? Is the original fence still there?
It, it's like a-
Like a cattle pasture?
Like a pasture fence, like a cattle fence. Yeah. There's, I, I think I did notice a little bit of a barbed wire. It's um-
I'd be kind of uncomfortable to jump on.
Yeah, I'd pick a different way in if I was trying to get there.
Do we have any other questions, comments or motions? Silence is excruciating.
Mayor, I'd be more than, unless, unless the board wants Dave Bland to weigh into this or unless the board wants to have a 530, I think we have enough checks and balances in place here. And we know where to take the compost to Jonathan's house if it doesn't work out.
That's right.
From that aspect. Hey, I'm happy to use it.
Okay. So I'd like to go ahead. We approve, make a motion to approve the short-term occupancy agreement with Terolome LLC is presented as outlined in the memo dated March 22nd, 2021. Leah from Becky.
Thank you, Commissioner Urban. All I heard was crickets there for 60 seconds or so. So we have a motion by from Commissioner Urban. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Riller. We'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
Pro Tim Garner?
Yes.
Mr. McCool?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. My hand is blurred. So that passes unanimously. So good luck and go make some good compost for the town.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate this, guys.
Thank you.
Going to go on to 11C, consider a resolution supporting the link silver line locally preferred alternative. Dana Stojenki and also Andy Mott and Jenna Nichols, if needed, from CATS.
I am going to talk to you a little bit about the CATS, on the CATS Silverline project. I'm going to share my screen. I just have a few slides. So let me do that.
Few is good.
And Dana, you're, you're slightly less audible than our other speakers.
Okay.
I don't know if you can speak.
Yeah.
Can you hear me any better now?
Not particularly, but I mean, I can hear you, but it's a little quiet.
Okay, let me see if, hold on. Let me see if I can go into my settings. Let me stop sharing. Let me just, bear with me one moment. It was fine. What can I do? Wrong thing. I'm sorry, guys. Blaspheming one is me messing up my audio.
Dana, you are audible. You are, we can hear you. I would probably just make a point to speak a little louder maybe, but we can hear.
Okay. So can you hear me any better? I tried to increase it. Okay, great. Okay, wonderful. Okay, let's start this. So I'm, I'm going to share my screen. We're going to just take a brief overview of where, what we want to do tonight. Basically, we're going to talk about the CATS staff recommended, recommended silver line refined locally preferred alternative. I'm going to refer to it as LPA because that is a mouthful. We, you know, just for a little background, you have the board memo. You know, we've had, this is going to be our third commission meeting with CATS to talk about Silverline. We did the walking tour with commissioners, the walking tour with the commissioners back in January. We of course had the Matthews Silverline task force. They did recommend for the LPA. And the, the CATS has had a very intensive public process and CATS has a survey out and 83% of the folks who approved the alignment, and that was for the whole alignment, like that 26 miles, not just, you know, the Matthews alignment. And so with that said, we did send out this Exhibit A, which is from, this is actually from CATS. This is their LPA, that locally preferred alignment alternative. And the resolution that we sent out, this was something that we as staff worked on because, you know, you've heard from lots of other folks. And we wanted as staff to give you a resolution of what we thought was appropriate. We did make some changes. So I'm, I'm not going to read this fully, but I will point out number five. And that is the town staff is directly to further coordinate with CATS on the filing. And I, I do want to read these through these. We did make some recommendations to change them slightly after discussions with the mayor and some other folks today that I think you all saw. But again, you know, I just want to see what you all think. And, you know, Jenna and Andy are here to answer your questions. So one of that is the design of non-rail infrastructure in the light, in the light rail corridor and stations adhere to the Town of Matthews ordinances and standards. Parking and access to the stations and businesses are addressed to this town's satisfaction, mitigating adverse impacts in downtown area. Eliminate the use of bolus, which is the rocks in the Matthews Street and Matthews Mid-Hill right-of-way. Minimize the footprint of rail in the Matthews section, the street section in order to maximize the pedestrian and bicycle facility. We tweaked it a little. I'm just going to show you that language that we tweaked for five. And again, this is, you know, the discretion of, you know, of course of the board, but we thought it would be more appropriate in, for number five, three, to mitigate adverse impacts, get rid of the downtown. So it's more broad for the entire town. And then add for under three and C, which is maintain zoning compliance for adjacent parcels. After talking with our talent engineer, with Susan, we thought it would be appropriate to make sure that any partner agency that comes in and does this kind of work needs to understand that certain things in our zoning ordinances, when we do zoning cases are a part of the development and that they need to make sure that those adjacent parcels, like for example landscaping is done to make sure that they're not out of compliance, those property owners are not out of compliance. With that said, you know, we are recommending adoption, to adopt the resolution supported the refined locally preferred alternative developed by CATS staff. And, you know, next steps, the LPA will be presented to the MTC for auction in April. The transit oriented development study will continue. So we will work on that and the rail trail study will continue. And, and so with that, I would want to, you know, that is basically the entirety of my presentation. And, you know, I know it is 10 o'clock. So, you know, I'm, you know, I'm, we got, we've got Andy Mott as well as Jenna on the call. And, you know, we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Urban?
Yeah, I, I do. And for full transparency, I know a lot of folks up and down that corridor, whether I've done work with them or their constituents, whether it's Daniel Levine or Taft or the owner of E74 or Point Blank Range, what have you. I am, two things. One is I would like to have Dave Bland, if all possible, at the vote. Cause I think this is, this is a 50 to 100-year vote. And so I think that would be important. So I would, I would like to do a deferral based just on that alone. But my other higher level points are, Bill Stevens, which I think everybody was copied on, sent out a email over the weekend. And he highlighted some differences that took place. And one of them was, and I know these are design issues, but they're pretty important design issues. One was train line down center line versus on one side of the other side of Monroe Road, which has huge long-term implications from a planning standpoint, you know. I, I obviously CATS has its reasons for wanting to do things. And I know the town engineers may have their reasons for wanting to do things, but I'm looking at it from the standpoint of the property owners. You know, on which side, if you're putting it on one side, how does it affect them? And, and has that discussion taken place with maybe those property owners that may be affected? So I think a little bit of breathing room here quickly. I mean, you got till, the next meeting is April 12th. Quickly kind of align with those folks that, hey, we may shift from center line to sideline. And here's what the implications are. Because I think a lot of folks are thinking that it's running down the center, especially the corporate players, the corporate owners of the property. And so that's my, that's my reservation. So I have two-fold reservation. Dave Bland's not here and I have some technical concerns that I think need to be still vetted. I understand in talking to somebody, it may have been you, Mr. Mayor, that, that there was a postcard or a letter sent out to these corporations. Well, I will, I will guarantee you that that, in a corporate world, is probably in someone's circular file and not getting to the right person to properly vet it. So those are my two cents.
Thank you, Commissioner Urban. And I share your concerns about, you know, fully vetting this with, with these property owners. In particular, I mean, the name of the property now is The Address, which is the large new apartment complex. Those, those of you from, from CATS may or may not be aware that that was kind of controversial here in Matthews. There were a lot of trees cut down inadvertently on that property. And we required them to heavily landscape it when they, when they planted them back and find them. And so to think that that may just go away. And I know that what Dana has suggested would make, you know, the zoning notes to be respected. But I would like to know more about what that's going to look like in front of that property. There was a lot of care taken to, to dress that corner. And if we're going to build a large bridge or a wall or whatever, right there, right in front of that property, I'd, I'd like to know what the owners of the property think about it. And what that gateway might look like. In general, I think, and I don't want to speak for the board, but we're okay with the rest of the plan. But I think for, for at least a couple of us, it's giving us a little concern about changing from the center to, to side running very late in the game. And is everybody, I'm, I'm not convinced that the public here in Matthews has had a chance to fully understand that change. And I want to be clear, and I discuss this with Dana, that this board has no desire to design the project. That's what you guys are the experts. But this is a pretty significant change and I don't think enough of the public has seen it or weighed in on it. Andy?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board. I'd like to just note something. From my perspective, this is not very late in the game at all. We, we're at the very, very beginning. So think of this, I was playing around with a metaphor for this. You know, if we're playing a football game and we open the silver line, it's, it's the touchdown. We're almost getting ready to kick the kickoff that's kicking to us. We're just getting ready to start. So I, I, I share, I understand your concerns, Mayor and, and Board. But we have a very long way to go. And what kind of, what we've been working towards at this first phase, this 5% phase, is really coming up with a concept. I mean, I think which shows like real transparency, what you, that side running concept is all work in progress. So all this stuff has to be run through a very detailed engineering evaluation and then tested and vetted repeatedly over and over again. And ultimately, yes, we have to, we have, we have to do all the public engagement, all that. But at this point, we're very, we're very early in, in the concept. So I would say that we will certainly keep, we're, keep working with town staff as we go forward. Whether it's center or side, right now we're leaning towards side. We think that has a lot of benefits, especially, especially in the Charlotte side of the project, which is right, you know, right after Galleria. So there's a lot of benefits on side running in, in Charlotte side. Once we get to Matthews, kind of have Galleria. The issue is we're only in that Monroe section for a very short section. So it would be very challenging for us to kind of dip in and out, you know, to dip in. Once we're out, it kind of makes sense to be out and to work your way. The one thing we have to evaluate is we have to get from that southern side to that northern side. And we have properties, buildings that are built right up to the right-of-way line along the northern side as well. So we have some, we definitely have some technical challenges that we're trying, that we have to overcome. But I, I think as far as the side running concept, I think that's something we can keep kind of working on. Yes, we absolutely have to do a very robust public engagement like we've done so far. As far as like, you know, the details of the engagement, I agree. We have not been really specific about side running in the public sphere, primarily because it's work in progress. And it, it could certainly change as we get into more detailed engineering. And so once we feel like we know what that impact would be, we would, or clearly know what the impact would be, we would certainly engage with the public players up and down the alignment for the whole, we have to do that for the whole 26 miles to make this project work.
I understand that. Thank you, Mr. Mott, for that explanation. But as I discussed this with Dana and Hazen earlier today, it kind of feels like you're asking our board to endorse the side running concept. And again, we're not trying to design it, but as I shared with Dana, I don't know which one is better. Or I don't know, this is not my area of expertise, obviously. So I'm a little bit nervous about saying, yeah, we, we want the side running concept. It's great.
What I, what I understand, the, the task force kind of endorsed was a Monroe Road corridor. I mean, I, I feel like once we, we have a long way to go to be 100% certain about the orientation and configurations of Monroe Road. Yeah, it's, it's, there's a lot of advantages and benefits to it that from a CATS and an engineering perspective, certainly. And, you know, I would say that, you know, going forward, once we kind of vet and, and kind of finalize that, we would, you know, working with town staff who would, and I would kind of say the town staff, our relationship that we built with Dana and Susan and Jay and CJ and everyone else on town staff, that we would kind of take their lead for future engagement with, with the board. I think we were trying to share kind of work in progress, where we're leaning towards, how things are going. Because there is, it does make a lot of kind of, there's a lot of positive benefits to it. But there's also impacts that have to be fully evaluated so that we can mitigate them if necessary.
Dana, are you aware that you can't leave the employ of Matthews until this whole thing is finished? You know that.
I don't believe that's in my contract.
Are there, are there other comments or questions for Dana or Andy or Jenna? Mr. Urban?
And I'm, I'm selfish. I'm supportive of Matthews. And so it's not 26 miles to me. I know it is to you, Andy, but it's about one mile to me. And, and we have a lot of large capital players along there. And, and in my mind, center running makes a lot more sense from a development standpoint in the future Monroe Road. In your mind, I'm sure you're saying, well,- In your mind, I'm sure you're saying, well, side, the sideline, you kind of, it eliminates having to do with Monroe Road a little bit. But I, you know, granted, we like, we like the alignment overall, or I do. I like the alignment overall, there's no doubt about that. I appreciate the process you took. I appreciate our, we have the best staff possible because alls I get when I talk to other commissioners and other locations is they want to hire Dana and Susan away, the whole nine yards. And they're peeved that we have this good working group here. But that being said, though, you know, I know in conversations with folks along Monroe Road, they've been waiting for this for a very, very, very long time. And every time I go to eat lunch there, someone tells, what's going to happen, what's going to happen? I, I would like to take a little bit, I want you to, I need them to be reached out to. This is me personally, to reach out to those folks and say, Mr. Levine, this is what we're planning, potentially doing.
I know Dana very well.
Oh, I'm breaking up, hold on.
No, 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 I was gonna say, I know, I know, I know Mr. Levine very well.
Yeah, and you got the two Levenes. You got the two opposite ones. And then you have a group that own multifamily along there, and you have a group that own private businesses, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I would just like to, you know, A for Dave and B for me on the technical side, is if we could defer this till April 12th and run this up the flagpole with some of the bigger landowners to this thing. Because they're telling me, they, they understood you had public stakeholder meetings, but they didn't feel reached out to individually as, as corporations kind of expect things to happen. And maybe that's the wrong thing to expect, but we know this goes on. Hazen and, and the town board talked about this year in and year out about getting out there, connecting with the people. How do you do it? And this board has always been good about saying, well, it's going to take that extra step.
I would like to, like to note as well, and we can, we can share some of this and maybe, maybe as another kind of more focused conversation. But, you know, when we started looking at like cross-sections, and one of the reasons why that kind of drive from center to side is that the, the center has more right-of-way impacts than you might imagine. You start talking about laneage requirements and crossovers and right turn lanes. And when you start building that in aggregate, you're not much different than side running, to be honest, when it comes to right-of-way impacts. And that's one of the reasons that we started to look at some of the side running is because you're not saving a whole lot and you're limiting access and turning movements and community impacts and construction impact. So there's, there's, there's a little more to it than just, we didn't want to rebuild Monroe Road. But, and I think, I think that's a conversation we can, we certainly will have with a lot of those, a lot of the stakeholders up and down the line. I agree 100%, we need to, we're going to, we need to work with all the folks up and down line. And we have done some focus outreach to some of the, some of the parties you mentioned, have had number of good conversations with them, not specifically about this particular issue. Because it's, again, this is all kind of work in progress as we go.
Okay, well, I'm just worried about this particular issue because the second item was, and the memo that Bill put out was the relocation of the, of the station. So whereas we were on industrial drive, now we're talking, now we're talking more out on Monroe Road. And so that changes the developmental aspects of what industrial drive could look like as well. So I mean, it's flipping, I don't know, Jay's still in the line of, it's flipping some planning issues as well. And I take Bill Stevens' email very much to heart. And then I followed up with a phone call to him. And I just, you know, I, he would have put it out there if he wasn't concerned, which then drove me to a concern, which then I'm talking to the mayor and we have a concern. And that's, that's where we stand at this moment.
Well, if for no other reason, perhaps we should defer to include Commissioner Bland.
That was my, my first highest level conversation point. So I will put a motion out there at this moment unless there's other stuff.
The board's got that right. Does, I mean, my hope going through the conversation, this discussion, and apparently my internet's a little bit stable and I take off my video, is, um, is to approve, my thought was to approve the current alignment with the exception of this portion on Monroe Road and bring it back for, to the board. It sounds like Commissioner Urban would like to see Katz do a little bit of legwork with the landowners there for the board to approve the Monroe Road section at the April 10th, is it 10th, April 10th meeting?
12.
12, April 12th meeting.
But I, I mean, Dave is still out, out in left field on this one. So I'm a little concerned with that. Personally, I could see exempting the Monroe Corridor. From that, for me, I could see from the intersection of 51 to the Charlotte Line, exempting that from this discussion and coming back on April 12th. I just, you know, it's, it's an important vote. I would have hated to have missed it. I'd hate to have Dave miss it, but if someone's had a conversation to Dave and can say, hey, I think he's on board with it, then if we could just exempt the Monroe Corridor, I think I would be happy with it. Mr. Mayor, your thoughts?
I have not spoken to Commissioner Bland, other than to know he's very busy involved in this trial.
Yeah.
And if, if it does no harm, I would rather just vote on the whole thing on April 12th. I mean, give it a couple of weeks. Commissioner McCool, do you have a comment?
I was just going to agree with Commissioner Urban. This is a 50 to 100 year, probably one of the most consequential votes this term. We, we should include everyone who's, who's on the selected body. And I don't think it hurts anything to, to wait two weeks.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. I wanted to point out that Family Dollar sold half of their campus, the North Building or the former Pick and Pay, to a new owner recently. And I don't know that they're aware of this. I'm in agreement with everything. I would just question whether it's realistic for Katz to reach out to Leon Levine, Daniel Levine, the new owners and, and all these people within two weeks, give or take, and, and have some form of consensus or agreement. I'm not sure if that's realistic or not.
That's a fair point.
I, I would say, I mean, I, we've reached out to some of those folks before. I, I think it would be challenging, especially, you know, for, for, for everyone. So I mean, we may not have that in two weeks.
Well, here's, here's, if, if, if we knew there was good faith in that going forward, and it may mean that you contact them and they say, okay, we're going to have several months of dialogue as you continue developing through this process, but they were aware of it. I, from an internal standpoint, I'd like to have some conversations with Jay Camp and, and the planning side about the, you know, what, what happens to industrial drive if the station moves or doesn't move? What happens to Monroe Road if the train comes down the center versus the side? What, what are those planning aspects of these things, not engineering aspects of these things? What takes place there? I think it's important to. So we could, we could be doing our due diligence, and I'd be happy to come back to April 12th, knowing that you've made a good faith effort, notified those folks, and they're like, okay, we understand, and that we're going to be continually in that loop. Does that sound like a win-win compromise?
It, it absolutely could be a good win-win compromise. Or, you know, another, you know, we might also, you know, we could still stick with the Monroe Road. So we're still, you know, it's the configuration of Monroe Road is kind of the question. It's not Monroe Road or something else. It's Monroe Road and how we're going to build it, right? And so that could also be a way to think of it, too, that, you know, when we go to the Metropolitan Transit Commission, we're committed to Monroe Road, but we're, we're silent on the configuration of it, subject to future action. We can do it that way, too.
Again, my concern is I'm not certain that very many people in Matthews have, those that follow this expected it to go down the center. And I don't think a lot of people are aware that it's been changed. I just would like to give them an opportunity to weigh in. And I don't expect, you know, hundreds of people to rush Town Hall, but at least give them a few more weeks to, I, I think ultimately we'll, we'll find that the, the LPA gets approved by this board. But I mean, I think, you know, I would like to wait and let our Commissioner Bland vote on it. It's a very important vote. I think that's, that's a good thing that any of us that were out would, would appreciate the board doing on their behalf. If it doesn't cause any undue harm, you know. I think Commissioner Urban, you're about to make a motion, or you did make one?
Make, make a motion that the mayor just made was really good is to go ahead and defer it to April 12th.
Okay, I guess I'll make that motion.
I made it.
You, you made it?
I made that motion.
Do we have a second?
April 12th.
Okay, do we have a second, Commissioner McCool? So we're gonna defer to April 12th to give, principally to give Commissioner Bland the opportunity to participate in this important vote. And also, we ask that Katz, you know, make a good faith effort to, to contact and work with him. We don't expect you to resolve anything in two weeks, but work with him going forward. Hazen, can we, can we do any more to publicize, like on the town website? That the current consideration is to be side running as it is? Or Dana, do you want to respond to that?
I guess we could, if, we have the video of the public input sessions from Katz. You know, if that's something that Marine can, you know, put up on social media platforms, that's not my field of expertise. But, you know, if she, if she could help us get the word out again, if that's something you're looking for, Mayor, I'm happy to help.
Now, you know, Andy, I've, I've heard you speak and you say, we had, we had all this outreach and we had five comments or whatever. Just, you know, and I've been on the MTC in Cartco for a while and realize that sometimes, you know, you don't get a lot of comments, but I mean, at least we made, we can say we made the effort to see if there's any.
So we'll, we'll work to get the word out, Mayor.
And, and so just to, just so you know, Mayor, I mean, I don't think that, you know, when Andy does his presentations, they don't talk about side running or, you know, median running, right? Andy, I mean, that's way in the weeds that, you know.
Our, our, yeah, our MTC action will not reflect that. It, it, we don't get that, we don't get very detailed in most, we're not talking about, you know, configuration issues. And so, you know, when we're talking, you know, I'm telling you in transparency and I'm telling staff that that's where things, that's where we, things are going. But as far as our MTC information item that we're presenting on Wednesday, it is not going to be that detailed.
And we have a motion from Commissioner Urban, a second from Commissioner McCool. We'll take a real call vote. The motion is to defer until April 12th for about, Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
Commissioner McCool?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
I vote yes, that passes unanimously. Thanks, Andy and Jenna and Dana. I mean, we're getting there. I think we'll have a successful result on the 12th. So thank you for, for staying up late and participating in this meeting with us.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. So we'll move on to item 11D, consider use of glyphosate grant funds to hire seasonal landscape worker. Mike, it's Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. It has been a long evening. I won't go too, into too many details about the glyphosate grant. You've heard from Ralph Ramsoar on a number of occasions about this initiative and as well as our adoption or our, our plans to develop an integrated turf management plan. What I've come to ask you for is support to make this program a success. And that would include additional staffing. With the glyphosate grant they gave us, or we will be awarded $10,000, that's two $5,000 grants. The only strings or the only things we could not do was purchase glyphosate. So we feel this is an appropriate use so we can develop our integrated turf management plan and also ensure that we are successful and we don't get to a point in three or four months where the weeds are unmanageable and, and the program is not successful. Currently, our landscaping staff has, or over the past several years, has taken on a lot more responsibilities with new properties, new parks, more landscaping beds, as well as flower baskets. So we just think this accumulation of workload has come to a point where we would like to request that the board approves a budget amendment where we use general funds until the grant funds are received, which is expected from one source in April. And the other one has not given us a set date. I can go into more details if you like, but I, I think everyone's heard a lot about the glyphosate grant as well as integrated turf management program, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, if Jay is still driving, if you can go back to the gallery view. Commissioner Miller?
I'll make a motion, we approve the budget amendment to allocate $7,500 and hire a seasonal grounds maintenance worker.
We have a second. We have a motion from Commissioner Miller, a second for Commissioner Urban. We'll take a real call vote. Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner McCool?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitley?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Move on to the 11D, consider focus of police vehicles. Chief Bennington?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board Commissioners. Clark Bennington, the Police Department, here today to request the allocation of general fund, fund balance money towards a purchase of a total of 10 vehicles for the Police Department. Just to give you just a little bit of a background, typically, we put in, or it's in our budget requests to replace at least seven vehicles a year. Part of our replacement plan this year, through analysis and looking at our aging fleet and our high maintenance cost vehicles, we are needing a total of 10 vehicles replaced this year. Yes, this typically does go through the budget process and typically sometime around May or June, the budget is adopted, at which time we then move forward with the purchase of our vehicles. I am requesting the allocation of this general fund, fund balance money early in this budget year with the anticipation that the seven vehicles will be funded next year. And then the three vehicles that we're needing in a CID will come from our salary savings allocation this year that would typically roll back into the fund balance anyway, so that money should be replenished. We have looked at our salary savings and there is plenty there to cover these additional three vehicles. So there's a couple of reasons that we have to do this request now. And, and not to get too deep into the weeds on this, but we've been informed by our sales managers that the vehicle manufacturing companies are now reducing the, the manufacturing of our vehicles, police vehicles, due to a shortfall or a shortage in microprocessors and also seat foam. What we've been told is if we don't purchase these vehicles within the next couple of weeks, they are going to shut down manufacturing of these vehicles. And it could be a significant period of time before we're even allocated the opportunity to purchase vehicles, which puts us even further and further behind in our replacement plan, thus costing us, we think, more and more money in our maintenance costs. So we are asking for this allocation early with the anticipation, as I said earlier, that the funds would be replaced through the normal budget process and also the rollover of our salary savings. So the breakdown is provided for you in the fiscal impact, where we talk about 35.7 per vehicle. It's about $326,000 for those police patrol vehicles and about $84,900 that would roll in from our salary savings for a total of about $410,000. I'm sorry, whatever the, the, the budget amendment does is also provided for you. So I know it's a lot of information. I provided, I think, a pretty in-depth memo. Hopefully you all had the chance to look at it, but this is something that we feel very, very strongly about getting into now so that we're not pushed further and further behind due to these COVID issues overseas, the microprocessors and the seat foam issues not being produced and ultimately pushing us back. So I'll take any questions if you have any.
Any questions or comments for Chief, Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. Chief, I have a question, a technical question. If it's a purchase, help me understand why you're asking us to have the manager enter into a lease agreement with Enterprise?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's a, it is a lease, that's what we were, that's what we are doing typically is leasing these vehicles as of a board action that was taken by the board last year to enter into this lease program. But we are allocating all of the funds ahead of time so that we're not, we're not allocating the lease cost per year. We are forwarding that money forward so that the total cost of the vehicle is allocated into this, this fund, if you will. And then that total cost of the vehicle is provided so that should we not complete the lease, we have the money already allocated to get out of it once the, the pilot program, if you will, concludes or we continue on with the process.
Thank you. Any further questions for Chief Bennington or motions? Mr. Urban?
Well, since we're talking about the lease, how, how is that working out? I mean, are we seeing effective use of repairs and, and things of that nature? I mean, are we getting our, are we getting our return on investment in this program?
I believe we are. I mean, we are, these vehicles that are in the lease program and they are newer. Um, ultimately the goal is to make sure that we are maintaining our fleet in that, uh, that warranty period so that it does reduce the amount of cost. Uh, we did have an additional meeting with Enterprise a couple of weeks ago to talk even further about how this lease program, uh, is going to benefit the town based on the projections of the numbers. It looks very promising for me.
And so just to be clear, Plan B would be don't do this and you guys are riding bicycles or we're putting Band-Aids on cars, right?
Uh, or yes, or you're allocating much more money into our repair costs to keep us up and running in these aging fleet vehicles.
And, and, and has this taken the burden, it should have taken complete burden off of our Public Works Department for maintaining the vehicles. Is that correct?
Not, not complete burden, right? I mean, we're talking about, um, I don't know the total number, maybe Becky does, of the numbers we have. I mean, we're, we're a fleet of 70, it was a hazen, 70, 75 vehicles. Um, we're probably only 14 or 15 into this lease, so we're not looking at taking all of the burden off. Now, should we have entered into, or should we get to a point where all of our vehicles, uh, are under this lease program and most of our major repairs are handled under warranty situations, then we are going to remove this as a significant burden on our public works. That's where you see some savings in your maintenance costs to the town that we currently allocate into public works.
And do we know what that delta is? Does Finance Director Becky Hawk have that delta figured out?
The delta of our expected cost saving.
But when you hit that plateau of how many you've leased and the costs are coming down?
So, um, no, because we're, we're taking, um, an incremental approach with this. Um, so we are only allocating the, um, typically seven, this year 10 number of vehicles into the program. So it's going to take a number of years to shift everything into it before you really start to see those costs go down. Um, so, um, i- if anything, you may actually see an increase in our maintenance costs to cover actual repairs to current police vehicles.
Right.
Because it's, it's too big of a lift to take the entire fleet into the system in one fell swoop. And so until we kind of cross over that hump, um, you know, we've got vehicles from, um, you know, 2009, 2010, 2011 that, um, are still needing to be maintained and they, um, they have proven themselves to be rather expensive and even some of the newer ones that should be cheaper, um, have not held up. And so I know that was part of the move to the Ford SUVs starting a couple of years ago because the Dodges have not proven to, uh, be a great vehicle for the Police Department.
Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you.
Anyone care to make a motion?
I will.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, give the town manager the ability to enter to a lease to purchase, um, total 10 vehicles, seven this year and three next year, uh, per the memo of Chief Pennington that is, he's presented tonight.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
So again, should that say purchase or lease?
It should say enter into a lease agreement for the vehicles and it should be a total of 10. Uh, we're going to be placing that order this year, not this year and next year. It will be just this year.
Uh, correcting, and I did say lease, but 10, 10 vehicles.
Okay. Uh, so we have a motion from Commissioner Whitley, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Garner. We'll take a, we'll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCool?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. That passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll go on to the next item, also with Chief Pennington, uh, consider our Police Department job reclassification. Chief?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Board of Commissioners, I'm here before you tonight to ask for the permission to, uh, reclass one position from officer to sergeant. Uh, this is, um, this is a move that's obviously necessary with our increased staffing and our reorganization of the, of the agency over the past couple of years. Um, I am looking to, to improve some of our oversight and supervisory rank structure, uh, within our SROs. As most of you know, with the loss of, uh, Sergeant Archer last year and her institutional knowledge, um, we did not have anybody within our SRO program that was, uh, on a promotional list or prepared to take over. So, and with our internal affairs process and the, the growing accountability that we are using within the organization, we had to use our supervisory resources much differently. So I'm here today to ask for the reclassification of one of our officers, um, within the SRO program who is currently, and there is currently an individual in that program on our promotional process or in our promotional list, um, to fill that, that, that role. Um, the E-Squad Sergeant that's currently overseeing our SROs, um, does not have much institutional knowledge in SRO. He's also supervising, uh, a multitude of other responsibilities and I believe that the reclassification of this officer to a sergeant, uh, is going to help improve our supervisory opportunities and abilities within that unit and our accountability. So, uh, I am asking for the reclassification of this officer to sergeant. Um, and if this, uh, is approved, I would like to move forward sometime around the month of, of May is, is where I'm anticipating this occurring. Um, with, and we will be able to pay for this upgrade with our current, uh, salary savings in our current budget.
Thank you, Chief Pennington. Any questions for the chief? Any motions?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitley.
I'll make the motion that we consider, uh, the Police Department to reclassify a job, uh, memo dated March 17, 2021, uh, that Chief Pennington presented to us tonight.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Whitley, a second by Commissioner Urban. We'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
Mr. McCool?
Yes.
I vote yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you and, uh, thank you guys very much.
Move on to item 11E, consider street closures for possible 2021 special events from Leanne Moore. Leanne?
Yeah, thank you so much, um, Mayor Commissioners. Appreciate the time. I'll make it quick. Um, I'm just here tonight to, uh, bring you the, the annual memo about street closures for our events and festivals. Um, only differences here this evening, um, are obviously we've deleted Beach Fest, which we will obviously not be having this year due to the COVID pandemic and the, uh, inability to plan for that, much less have large crowds at this particular point. We did want to go ahead and just kind of get these on the radar. However, um, with the contingency that should govern, governor's orders, uh, open up and if we are allowed to have these events, at least the streets would be closed and residents would be aware of that. Um, everything else is in place. Matthews Fourth of July, Matthew's Alive, no changes to either one of those, Hometown Holidays. Currently I put up at the Town Green. Again, we always talk about possibly moving that to Stumptown Park. Um, and if that should, if it should happen, obviously we would, um, let you guys know. But currently everything is planned as, as it normally is each year and the street closures are, um, no major changes there. Um, other than, um, this would just be enacted, um, should we be able to have the events. Obviously if they are restricted, then, um, none of these closures would need to be observed.
Okay. Thank you, Leanne. Um, let's, let's, let's hope and pray that we can have all of these. That would be great.
I know.
We need that right now, don't we?
We do, very much.
All right. Uh, do we have any questions for Ms. Moore or motions?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead. Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Um, I make a motion to, uh, approve the requested street closures on Leanne's memo, um, to ensure the continued safety and success of our town's signature events and festivals.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Garner, a second from Commissioner Miller. We'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
Commissioner McCool?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you for staying up lately, yeah?
Not a problem. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Move on to item 12, the mayor's report. Uh, I, I just, uh, have one thing tonight and I had asked Lori to hold out some, uh, flyers. Do you have those? Or where you can put them up? This is in regards to the restoration efforts of, uh, the Roseland Cemetery. Um, it's actually back behind the property. We were just talking about the, the address apartments. And you may recall, uh, especially those of you that were on the board, that this, uh, this, uh, cemetery is, is a, uh, thought to be, or is known to be a historically black cemetery. And I was there this past weekend and, uh, I shared a, a pretty interesting story, I thought, but about close to 30 years ago, or at least 25 years ago, I used to live in the Sarus Forest neighborhood and my dog ran off. And so I was walking through, which was, back then was a heavily wooded area. Um, and it was about four, four, five o'clock in the afternoon and it was starting to rain and lightning and I tripped and fell and it was just like a horror movie. I fell with my head right near a, a piece of a tombstone and I had, had no idea there was a cemetery there. I, I think I screamed, but, uh, I found my, found my dog later. But, uh, this gentleman, Hope, his number here is 704-579-1688. He's leading the efforts to clean up the site. And, uh, they've done a phenomenal job already, but he's a little, uh, concerned because he's not getting, uh, the amount of volunteers he needs out there. Uh, what they are doing is literally picking up debris. Um, there's garbage out there, lots of, uh, fallen limbs, sticks. Um, and, and they're picking all this up and throwing it, carrying them to dumpsters. And the plan is to totally, uh, you know, refresh the entire cemetery to put up a fence around it, as was discussed during the rezoning. They've done ground penetrating radar out there and they, they know there's, uh, over 100, um, uh, grave sites out there. There's, um, and so they're really looking for artifacts. And one of the things I shared, I was talking to Commissioner Whitley this afternoon and he said that it was common, uh, particularly in black cemeteries in the, up through the 1920s to plant periwinkle on, on the graves of, uh, the deceased, um, as opposed to graves of the alive. It's getting late, but, uh, anyway, this area is totally covered in periwinkle. It's about 1.7 acres, I think, and it's really neat. It's, it's really, uh, shaping up to be really beautiful. But I promised, uh, uh, this gentleman Hope that I would, that I would advertise it. Encourage you, if you can go out there for half an hour, just to, if nothing else, look around, look at the site. And if you know any, um, strong backed friends that are willing to donate some time, uh, basically again, it's just picking up debris, uh, raking leaves, cleaning the site up. They're finding all kinds of, uh, interesting artifacts out there. Uh, years ago, small pots were placed, uh, on some of the tombstones, uh, and with, with the, the possessions of the, the past, we'll put in these little pots and they're finding pieces of the pots. Um, the most recent, uh, uh, grave dates to 1954. Um, and speaking with Commissioner Whitley tonight, I believe, uh, Harvey Boyd's grandmother is, is buried in this, this site. So.
Grandfather, two, I think.
So anyway, I won't go on. You saw the information. I'd like to ask Lori, or Marine, you're still on, if we could post that on the town website. I promised Hope that we would make an effort to publicize it. If, if you, any of you have any, you know, belong to any organizations or know a Boy Scout troop that wants something to do or a church or any kind of effort like that, uh, because, you know, it's taking longer than anticipated. When I was out there, there was probably seven or eight volunteers on site and three of them were from my family. So there's not a lot of people there doing a lot of work. So he really needs a lot of help. Um, but again, if you're, if you're unable, uh, to, to, to participate, probably need to go out there just to look at the site. It's kind of amazing that this is right, you know, right in Matthews and it's going to be really nice when it's finished. Uh, that's it for my mayor's report. We'll go on to the.
End that memorandum. I wrote out there today and just trying to see how to navigate to get from the back parking lot. If you can, in your memorandum, tell people how to get from the back parking lot, where to park and how to walk back there so that they can know. Cause I, I, I really couldn't figure it out, but I do have, I do anticipate having a couple of my people come out there.
That's a, that's a very good point. Um, when I went out there, I did the same thing. I could see somebody working in the cemetery. I'm like, how do you get there? And I drove all the way around to the town homes on the other side. But the way you get there, I believe there's only one entrance open at the apartment, uh, complex. And if you drive straight back, there's a roundabout and just drive as far as you can to the back of the property. There's a pond. There's a, quite, quite a muddy area, but you have to walk along the edge of the pond and then the cemetery is right beyond there. Um, but if, if you will have them call that Hope, uh, gentleman, he's a, a young man. He will, uh, coordinate with them, tell them where to park, um, and all that. But yeah, if you do go out there, you need to wear some, uh, some, some boots or something because it's, it's very muddy. They've, they've disrupted the plant several times and it's, you will track some mud, but.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. That's it. Uh, Mr. Attorney, you have anything?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Just real quickly and, uh, apologize to the board for the lateness of this, but I just found out last Thursday that Municipal Attorney's, uh, Winter Conference is going on virtually this Thursday and Friday. Normally you go to Chapel Hill for this. I don't know why I didn't get the, uh, announcement in February like you normally do, but at any rate, I would like permission to attend the Municipal Attorney's Winter Conference, but it will be virtual. So it'll be out of my office. Won't be any travel or anything like that. But I.
Is it spring yet?
Pardon me?
Isn't it spring yet? We gotta get pretty close to spring. We're having a winter conference.
That's it.
All right. So do we have, uh, let's do a roll call vote. Do we have a motion? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to allow Mr. Buckley to attend the winter conference. I'm sorry, what's the name again, Charlie?
It's the North Island Municipal Attorney's Winter Conference.
Right. What he said, we've motioned to McCool. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. So we'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
Commissioner McCool?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And I want to second, uh, what Mayor Taylor said. Uh, congratulations on 43 years, uh, with the town. That's a great accomplishment.
That's a lot of night meetings.
That, that, that's a couple of Ken McCool lives that, uh, you said, yeah.
Amazing.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
You want to the town manager's report?
I do have something. I'm sorry, but this will be very short. So we have, you've heard about the American Rescue Plan. Town of Matthews is scheduled to get one, 7, 9.7 million dollars. They're going to do it in two tranches, as they call them. One's going to come, first half's going to come within the next 60 days and then, uh, the second half will come 12 months later. Uh, there's some categories. Becky and I are going to listen to a, um, uh, webinar put on by the League of Municipalities tomorrow in the morning. However, the US, everybody's waiting on the US Treasury's guidelines. So we don't know what exactly this can be spent on. Uh, it, it, it can be spent on economic impacts, both direct and indirect. It can be spent on premium pay for employees, which we did last year, not all, I don't know if any other towns in Mecklenburg County did it. Um, government services that as a result of COVID-19 losses, revenue losses as a result of COVID-19. Um, so we are going to learn a lot more about this. Uh, 9.7 million dollars is a lot of money. That's 40% of our budget. Um, all in all, I think we've weathered, um, the COVID pretty well. You guys didn't give raises for the first six months of this, this year, this current fiscal year. That was out of prudence. That may be an example of something we can tap into because I think under normal circumstances, if it wasn't for the COVID, we would have done something like that. So we got our work cut out for us to talk about what didn't we do as a result of the CI, in the CIP because of COVID. Um, but, uh, just a lot more information to come in the near future, but we're waiting on the, uh, uh, US Secretary Treasurer, Treasurer's Office to give us guidance.
So, so is it thought that we have to, to, uh, we can't just say thank you. We have 9.7 million or whatever. We have to prove need or prove where we're going to use it.
You do.
Chief Pennington was talking to me about getting Escalades for the police. That was a.
Yeah. 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 I mean. Yeah. 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 I mean, you know, the worst thing about this money to me is like not spending it properly, right? Then there's ethical problems or
Sure.
We gotta, we gotta scramble and get the money back. That sounds very difficult.
Right, sure. I mean, we want to take our share and get all we can. That's reasonable and owed to us for sure. So Thank you. Yeah, as you find out more about that, please keep our board informed. I'm sure you will, but that's that's pretty exciting. I've heard some of the other municipalities around here talk about, you know, hey, that's 40, 50, 60% of our annual budget. Holy cow. So there's it's a lot of money you're bandied about. Does anybody have anything else for the good of the group before we adjourn? Again, I want to thank everybody. I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
I did watch the school board meeting. No, I'm sorry, it was not the school board. It was a presentation on a possible relief school for Matthews. And that does look promising, I think, especially with regard to the the most recent approvals of development that are impacting Crown Point. The school will be closer. It will be located on the Midhill Middle School campus. So there will be some relief for Crown Point and from that, there will be some relief, expected relief for Matthews Elementary as well. So I thought that was good news to share to the board.
I I am remembering one other thing that I heard, some very unfortunate news this afternoon. I shared it with Commissioner Urban. He and I were talking, but I heard that Jim Watley had passed away yesterday. Anna Lisa's husband. So that's a well-known Matthews resident of many, many, many years. So all right, I will, we keep the keep the family in our our thoughts and prayers for sure.
If we hear any any funeral arrangements or visitation, whatever the case is, sharing it would be nice.
Sure. That's a good, good point. Please do. I think I I heard about it on one of those rapid fire, you know, texting and emailing chains. I think the word spread pretty quickly.
Yeah.
We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second for Commissioner Miller, a second for Commissioner Urban. Before I call the roll call vote again, I want to thank this board for working together through some more difficult than usual concerns this evening. And I think we came out good and we made the citizens proud. We did some good work tonight. So thank you. Okay, we'll take a vote. Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitley?
Yes, and I, Mayor, I'd like for the board to keep me in prayer. Me and my wife were celebrating our 49th wedding anniversary on Thursday and I'm going on vacation for a much needed vacation for over a year. So I'm going to be leaving, you know, for a while. But yes,
Have a good, well-deserved time. I break in here, I should mention that Commissioner Miller also became a grandfather again recently. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations on that. Your son had a All right, let's continue. Let's continue with the roll call vote. Commissioner McCool?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Good night.